All right, thank you. I was getting worried that we were just continually seeing the, we'll start momentarily. Well, welcome to our 2024 Budget Workshop. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to present what we've been working on for a very long time, or at least it feels like a very long time. I need to, before I start, thank my, my team. That's all of the team that have worked on this budget, especially Tina and her team who put in countless hours on this, as well as our HR Director and her assistant. They have put in countless hours as well, so welcome and let's, let's get started. We do have a balanced budget to present to you and with that, if we can start the presentation, that would be great. All right, thank you. So this will be a presentation of the 2024 Recommended Budget and our Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Go ahead, next slide. So we always start out with this, just anybody who's not familiar, I think this kind of helps. Can we go back one slide, please? Or is that? We're kind of skipping around. Okay, thank you. So the purpose of the budget is, or the process is to describe the budget development, or sorry, I'll restart. The purpose of this workshop is the following: to describe the budget development process, to provide the budget highlights, to summarize operating budget recommendations, present the five-year capital improvement plan and recommendations, and report on debt management, and of course, to take feedback from the council on any changes or updates they feel may be necessary in any of these areas. Next slide.
Sorry, can I interrupt really quick? I want to comment on that.
Sure.
So, you know, I noticed that one of the really important things missing under purpose is what the council's purpose is when it comes to the budget session every year. And so, especially since we have three new people, I just want to talk about how important the budget is because it is the council's number one, it's our best tool for guiding the city forward in a manner that we feel represents what the priorities are of our constituents. We are the conduit between the taxpayers and this budget. And as we've kind of talked about before, what, what is this council's priority? What are the issues that we are most concerned about and want to tackle? And what do we want to accomplish in the coming year? This budget is the way we go about making those things happen. So as we go through this, it's really important to ask yourself if those things are built into this budget, into these numbers. And it is a recommendation, but we have the ability to have an open discussion about every one of these items that will come up. It's a workshop, so we're not under the gun of Robert's rules. We, we have the freedom to openly discuss our issues, our concerns, and then drill down to maybe some solutions that we all feel comfortable with. So I, I hope that we're all able to take our time today and tomorrow to really do that and go through and make sure this budget is something that the citizens will be proud of and something that will address their concerns because I think we all could say there's a lot of common ground amongst the comments that we receive from the public, you know, pavement preservation be one of them. So I want, so the purpose for us is to make sure that this is the budget that we want that tackles our concerns as well.
Yep. Good point. No, I appreciate you pointing that out, Councilor Staley. It, again, a big portion of that is when we build this budget, we build it based on the strategic plan, the, basically, the, the comments and the priorities that we have heard over the year as well. And I think the invitation for input is not only welcome but needed, so thank you. Next slide. So the, the budget development process, next slide. So I, as I mentioned, we have spent a lot of time on building the budget. We start and identifying capital projects in November. We did our, basically, our budget workshop kickoff with council, May, or February ninth, we did our strategic planning retreat on a March third. We have the May 12th Recommended Budget, which actually is, it was printed, we're actually reviewing that today and tomorrow. The tentative budget is set to be brought to the council June 6th and final adoption of the budget June 20th. And this budget will go into effect first day of July 2023, and we will be referring to it as fiscal year 24 budget as it runs to June 30th, 2024. Next slide. So the steps in developing the budget. So we have the citizen survey, we hold a strategic planning retreat, we align the capital improvement projects with council and citizen priorities, we forecast revenues and fund balances, which is the activity that we did first of February at our workshop with the council. We do a lot of evaluation, evaluations of programs and services that is done with each department. We've met multiple times. Tina and her team have met with departments a number of times as well. And then we present the balanced budget. Next slide. So strategic plan priorities. Obviously, we've added one this year. I almost said, here's the ones that we we worked on last year, but we've actually gone through and added a new one. So those strategic plan priorities are revolve around livability, the service optimization, economic prosperity, communication and teamwork, partnerships, culture, and then the new one, water sustainability. Next slide. Okay, obviously, when we're, when we engage in building a budget, when we're doing our forecasting, there are always external factors that we try to take into account, as well as any internal factors, but obviously, we don't control a lot of what happens in the economy. And so these are the things that we are looking at as we build the budget and we do forecasting for the next five years. So inflation, of course, has played a huge role in our, in our budget and building the budget. We've experienced a lot of inflation, as you're all aware. Interest rates have also gone up that have an effect on our budget. Unemployment rates, something that we always are looking at, new construction, and I will say that obviously, new construction and how inflation and interest rates play a part in that. And then the thing that we've been dealing with over the last couple of years that none of us like to say out loud, but it's been our absolute reality is supply chain issues and how, how are we, or are we able to get equipment and materials that we need? Next. So US inflation rates, we hit our peak back in 2021. That has had a direct impact. I guess we've been kind of living pretty, I'll say luckily, over a large, long period of time and not experienced any inflation. And then we got hit with a huge amount of inflation in 2021. That has played a pretty significant role in every aspect of a city operations. And as you can see, year to date, that is coming down, which is a great thing. There is a little bit of trailing effect of that. And we actually know that the feds are considering raising interest rates a, a little bit more, which may bring that down some more. We'll see what, what that does for our inflationary rate. But happy to see it coming down, and we actually expect to see some price rebound back down towards what we're to normal amounts, but not to where we were prior, you know, that 1.4% in 2020. We don't think we'll see that prices back to 2020, but a little more reasonable. Next slide. So this is the Fed Funds Rate Effect. So in, as you can see, inflation was really high and the Fed rate started to be increased. That has worked. And again, what they're going to decide to do in the next month or two, we'll see. But hoping to see that 4.9% come down a little bit more, would prefer that it came down naturally without them having to raise rates anymore because that does have a negative effect on city, on what the city does and revenues. Next slide. So unemployment rate, Arizona is in red and our area were lumped in with Lake Havasu in these numbers. We contain, we continue to be just, we above the state average, but not by much. And so unemployment is actually really healthy in both Arizona and in the Lake Havasu-Kingman area. Next slide. New building permitted issue. This is, of course, where we see inflation and interest rates having the biggest effect and impact on what we're doing. As you can see, through 2020, had strong growth even through 2021. And then with the cost increases along with inflation and interest rates being raised, we've seen that decline. That is reflected in our revenues. And again, we're, we're optimistic about pricing and the hopeful, the feds do not have to raise interest rates anymore so that people can afford to not only build apartments and housing, but can afford to get into, into the housing. Next. So our new building permits issued, this is a timeline of what that has looked like since July of 2021. And this is a monthly snapshot. As you can see, we had a couple of months where you would maybe expect to see a little bit less construction. Winter months tend to be that. And we're pretty happy to see that we're back headed up to 20. The April 17, that decrease is not what we were looking for. Obviously, you want to see that trend go up through the, basically, the building cycle time. That's basically spring through the fall. So again, we'll look to the feds and what they do with interest rates to see what that ultimately does with our new building permits being issued. Next slide. So budget highlights. Next slide. So I'm going to turn the time, this section, over to Tina to walk you through policies and kind of what the forecasts are, ended up looking like for the budget. So Ms. Tina.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. So it's important, there are always our financial policies that we consider whenever we're developing the budget, but there are two specific policies that we want to point out in this particular recommended budget. One of those is our fund balance policy. Specifically, this year, we were given direction to reduce our, our, an informal policy, I suppose, to reduce what we keep on hand at the end of the year, so that minimum amount. Normally, it's 25% to 50% of our budgeted expenditures and outgoing transfers. This year, in order to fund the streets, repairs, maintenance, and improvements program, we were asked to reduce that to 35%. So that was addressed and that is included in the recommended budget. Also, something else that we look to and that the council adopts every year, actually, so once we know the direction you want to go, we'll bring a resolution to you. But the public safety pension funding policy, it's required by state statute that the council adopts a pension funding policy each year. So we are required to contribute a minimum amount to PSPRS, which we do. But we are also recommending that we pre-fund our entire budgeted amount for PSPRS, which is about $200,000 more than what the required contribution is. And that helps us stay on top of any sort of missed assumptions with PSPRS. Again, council's goal in the past has been to maintain 100% funding level of that unfunded liability so we don't get into the same issues and the reasons why we issued the large bond recently. So that's being recommended. And we want to pre-fund it so that it can get invested immediately and we can start making returns on those monies. And although we don't have any sort of issue with falling below the 100% funding ratio in fiscal year 24, we also want to include in that policy that if we do, we would use general fund reserves or a contingency reserve that was set up with that pension fund obligation issuance to, to pay down that unfunded liability in an effort to, to maintain it at 100%. So that is included in the recommended budget as well. Thank you, Krista. So.
You're saying the over money gets invested. How's it invested?
So PSPRS invest it. They are required by statute to do so. We don't have any authority over that. So the total revenues for the fiscal year 24 Recommended Budget are $301.9 million. Now, we always talk about how important our TPT collections are and that it's the primary funding source for many of the services and programs that we provide, and that is indeed the case. When you look at this particular chart, you're going to see actually that we've got contributions and intergovernmental revenues that far exceed our TPT collections. But that is solely due to our traffic interchange, the contributions that we're expecting to receive from the developers and the state. It is also due to the Department of Justice's $52.5 million payment that they're making for the dress site cleanup. And it has to do with almost $30 million in grant revenues. So if we take all of those aside, you will see that local sales tax or TPT is the primary funding source for, for our programs and services. So let's look at our TPT collections and what we've experienced in the last couple of years, what we're expecting in this year, the rest of this year and into next year, and then what the five-year forecast looks like. So as Mr. Foggan alluded to, we are anticipating that new construction will not necessarily get anywhere near the Great Recession times, but we do expect it to slow down for the next couple of years. And that is going to affect construction sales tax. And we are seeing with the higher interest rates that people are not spending on big-ticket items such as vehicles and appliances and furniture and all of the things that generate a lot of retail tax. So, so for the rest of fiscal year 23, we think that we are going to be just about in line with what we collected last fiscal year. And we are projecting a slight decrease in sales tax going into fiscal year 24 based on those economic indicators. We do expect that in fiscal year 25, there will be a slight recovery and then we will start to stabilize our growth, the growth rate to about a sustainable growth rate at about 4% going forward. That's what we're seeing. In fiscal year 25, we've, in fiscal year 26, we will get to that 4%. Thank you, Krista. Another large contributor to our revenue source are state shared distributions. That is also a primary revenue source for us. And a little bit different from what we're seeing in our local TPT, you're going to see that there's actually an increase in fiscal year 24. So I just want to cover what our state shared distributions are, first of all. So we receive four of them. And one of them are our highway user revenues that the state distributes. Those monies are required to be spent on our streets and those go directly into our streets, operations, and maintenance. And then we have three others that we receive. We receive, all cities and towns receive a portion of state sales tax. They receive a portion of vehicle license tax, and they receive a portion of the state's income tax that is collected. And so on the income tax side of things, we as cities and towns do not collect income tax from the state. Well, let me see. So we are two years behind in collecting the state's income tax. So in fiscal year 24, we are actually collecting 2021's calendar year taxes, okay? So when we get to fiscal year 24, we're actually looking at 2022's collections, I'm sorry, 2021's collections, which at that point, there is no change to the tax rate. We know that the state is moving to that flat tax rate. They started that last year. We will start to see the effects of that going into fiscal year 25, which is why you will see that reduction in state shared revenues in fiscal year 25. So that is the big falloff from fiscal years 22, 23, and then 24 down to fiscal year 25. Yes, Councilor Staley?
There were provisions, right, so that this flat tax didn't penalize the cities. Was that just short-term?
So that is correct, and that is why fiscal year 24 is so high. So what the state did to compensate for what the cities were going to lose, starting with, when the, when the flat tax goes completely into effect, is they increased our allocations to 18% from 15%. That started this fiscal year, which is why there's a jump in the income tax. But as soon as the flat tax goes into effect, and we do not know yet what the effects of that will be, there will be a decline in the collections that we receive.
And I assume it takes a vote of the legislature to try to get a bigger piece of that pie?
So the league was, was a strong proponent of working with the state in getting us to the 18% allocation. We were very fortunate at the time to be able to, to get that. I cannot imagine that it would be easy to increase that allocation. We were very fortunate to have that happen at that time. But yes, it would take an act of legislation to do so. Thank you.
And Tina, I would just lean on that and just say that it was considered, that effort to give the city more money earlier was an, was an effort to keep us held harmless. But even in that process, the city of Kingman recognized that we were going to be short at least $200,000, if not more. And so the hard, hold harmless statement was kind of not true.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Is there a question, Mayor?
Yes, after the dust settled, and I, and I apologize for not, but I know you know, what ended up with the rental sales tax? How did that bill? I know that there was a bill for it, and there was a one, a number of legislators wanting to do away with it. What happened with that?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I actually had it in my notes to cover it on the TPT collection. So right now, it's still in place. However, what we heard on Monday was that the bill is actually more than likely going to be approved by both the House and the Senate. So it will be up to the governor to veto that when it hits her desk, although we are hopeful that it will be vetoed. We do not know what that's going to look like. If it goes into place, many cities and towns are going to lose millions of dollars. For us, it will be about a $300,000 impact on our collections. And that is, I believe, going into effect January 1st of 2024, is what, is what the bill states. So thank you for bringing that up.
Well, and as you mentioned, the 18%, I know, I was texting Representative Biassucci about that, and he said that probably will pass. That's what he's thinking, that bill. Well, of course, it's passed both houses. But he was seeing that's, he also then responded and said, that's why we bumped you up from, what, 15 to 18%? That was the excuse that we were getting.
Yeah, and that's the legislative. the legislators have been convinced of that. But again, even in that "hold harmless," that wasn't true for all cities, and it certainly wasn't true for Kingman. And we pointed that out, and the Dorn Policy Group pointed that out and have spent time with a number of legislators on both the rental tax and this 18% saying that, reminding them that this is a loss of revenue to the city of Kingman for both of these actions.
I had a question.
Yes.
Have you heard that they are going to stay in session in perpetuity for... so that if they need to convene, the governor does not have to bring them together? Therefore, anything they're passing is not going to go into effect until 90 days after they convene?
So, I heard that they are pretty much out of session and that it's pretty... that it's pretty much complete, is what my finance legislation call said on Monday. So, I don't know. I'll know more on Monday when I attend the next call.
I'd be curious to know.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have a conversation with Representative Gillette, as well as Senator Borelli, last week, and Borelli said it was going to be dead. It was going to get vetoed.
That would be fantastic. I do want to point out on that, though, you know, it doesn't affect the state at all. They don't collect residential rental tax, so sometimes they don't really care about the impact on the cities. Something else that they're doing, and although it does not affect us because we do not have a food tax, but they are expecting... I mean, that was proposed this year. It has not gone... it did not pass, but they are thinking that it will be introduced again next year, and that will also hurt cities and towns. So, just as additional information.
I just had one final comment, and that's we might all think about when we're in front of our representatives, Gillette from here, as you guys know, Borelli, Biassucci. We should be talking about the fact that, over time, our share of what the state collects has been shrinking and shrinking and shrinking, whether it was HRF or state shared revenues, and then they're trying to remove taxes. The state is operating with a huge surplus of money, so there's no reason why they couldn't allocate more to the towns. You know, there shouldn't be this division between state and city. But in this case, it feels like there is. So, we should be talking to them about asking to get a bigger portion of state shared revenues, and even talking to other representatives in other cities about maybe collectively, our towns all push for this. If we organized, you know, in each town, as I think everybody would agree, we'd like to get more of the state shared revenues, and it would help our budgets, and especially since our budgets continue to get smaller and smaller, but our costs don't. So, that should probably be at the forefront of our minds when we're talking to these people, is getting a bigger portion distributed back like it used to be.
Thank you.
That's a great point, and that's something that the League... we've actually had that as a talking point, and I know the League has been really pushing the cities to come together, and there's two issues there. One that you talked about, Councilor Staley, is loss of revenue. The other part of that is just loss of local control that the state legislature just doesn't seem to care about or pay attention to, the fact that cities, the closest government organization to the citizens, everything that they seem to be doing these days is undermining our revenue and undermining our ability to set laws at the local level. And so, that's going to continue to be a conversation. The League has shown itself to be a great place for cities to come together. You know, we don't... it doesn't matter if it's just our local representatives at the state level, the ability to be able to reach out and talk, and, you know, we...
Mr. Foggan? I like he stopped mid-sentence. Okay. We'll wait for him to reconnect? Do you want to wait for him to reconnect, or...
Ron, are you still there? We lost him. To wait for a little bit, for a couple of minutes for connection?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Did you hit the mute button?
Did you hit me? Oh, the internet dropped me. I need to put another quarter in.
Okay.
Sorry. It's payphone internet guest. You hear me okay?
We do now.
Oh, sorry. I apologize for that. I hate not being there with... this is not optimal by any means. Anyway, I don't know.
Looks like we lost you again, Manager Foggan. Wondering if he's on his hotspot like he was last night or different system?
Yeah, I don't know.
What do we want to do?
Sorry. My hotspot is not hot right now. Anyway, I don't know where I got cut off. I certainly apologize for that.
Do we want to move on from the state shared distributions?
If there's any other questions on that, we'd... you know, I just, again, want to say that the League has been a great benefit to bringing all the cities' representatives, giving us access to representatives across the state to be able to reach out and talk to. So, it's not just our local folks that we have access to.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so moving on to the total expenditures for the fiscal year '24 recommended budget. So, when we talk about the budget, we typically refer to this as our total appropriations. We'll talk about that a lot, especially during tentative adoption and final adoption. And that is really just all of the expenses that are included in the budget. So, you'll see that there is an increase from last year, from $302 million to $365 million, and that is due partially to the draw sites increase of $22.5 million. We also increased the cost of the Kingman Crossing TI by almost $10 million, although we are not funding it. We do have to appropriate for it or include it in the budget. So, that is also another reason for the increase. We've got grants that increased by about $6 to $7 million also, and let's see what else is... we've got in there? Capital projects, we're doing... we've got more spending on our streets as well, so that accounts for the majority of the expenses. And as we go through the capital budget and the operating budget, you'll see where those increases come from.
Tina, if I could interject real quick?
Absolutely.
We're seeing this kind of nice trajectory upwards or larger budgets, but fiscal year '24, we have a $365 million budget. And then, when we were looking at the state shared revenues, we saw maybe a reason why, because there's a spike right now that the state was trying to allocate. Are we expecting a slight decrease, the same amount, or a slight increase next fiscal year, fiscal year '25?
So, it's going to depend on which capital projects roll over. Much of the budget is capital. Our operating budget is about $88 million, and much of the rest of it is capital. So, when we get those spikes in state shared revenues, they'll sit in reserves or be transferred for capital projects. So, if we don't have those reserves, you're exactly right, Councilor Pat, those monies would not be... we would not have those reserves, so we wouldn't be able to fund additional capital projects.
Right. So, I'm looking at the TPT collections. It looks like the next year, in the fiscal year '25, TPT will be the same, but possibly state shared revenues might go down a little bit. So, our... basically, is our '25 fiscal year projected budget going to be slightly lower than this year?
So, it's... again, it's hard to say just not knowing which projects are going to carry over. If the interchanges don't get completed, those are going to be included in next year's budget. Assuming, though, that the draw site gets completed, yes, we are going to see a big decline in the spending.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide. Thank you, Krista. So, talking about the operating budgets. So, the operating budgets this year account for about $88 million of our total appropriations. That is an increase from last year. About, I want to say, 35% to 40% of that has to do with the personnel increases that we will cover in the next few slides. The rest have to do with internal services, capital, outlay, vehicle replacements, equipment, that sort of thing. Again, you'll see those in our operating budgets as we cover those individually. And then, the other large piece of our expenses is the fiscal year '24 capital, the CIP portion of the budget, and we will be covering that in later slides as well. Thank you, Krista. So, it's important to cover the outgoing transfers for the general fund because it's a large amount, and that, again, accounts for some of the excess reserves that we have accumulated over the years. And so, over $23 million is going to be transferred out of the general fund. This is not money that is going to outside sources. It's money that's being utilized for other expenses within the city or other funds within the city. So, $10 million of that is going to HRF for the Streets Repairs Maintenance and Improvements Program. $9 million of that is going to capital projects. So, what we typically do is we take all of our construction sales tax every year, and that goes to the capital projects fund. And then, any projects that are approved by the council, if we have, or as we talk about priorities for the council, the monies that... or the projects that we're able to fund, we use general fund reserves to cover those as well. We do have that pension, that unfunded liability for PSPRS that we borrowed money to pay down, and that is a $2.7 million annual payment, so that comes from the general fund as well. We have retiree expenses and health saving account contributions that the general fund contributes to of $600,000. Now, the transit fund, although it is supported in large part by grants, it is not entirely funded by grants, and the revenues that the transit fund collects does not support the entire cost of the system. And so, the general fund also contributes to that. Fiscal year '24, that will be $325,000. And then, the powerhouse, currently, we transfer the hotel tax that we collect for tourism. It's currently collected in the general fund, and we just transfer it directly to the powerhouse. So, those monies will be transferred to the powerhouse. That's where our tourism department operates out of. And then, lastly, our utility billing department actually administers our business and dog licensing, but that is not a water rate payer expense. That is a general fund expense, and so, we... the general fund transfers about $15,000 to the water fund to cover the expenses of the utility billings department's administration of that process. And I talked about this earlier, about the fund balance in the general fund. This goes to show where our fund balance is expected to be over the next five years, so where we've been. And then, once we reduce it to the 35% level in the out-years, where we expect that to be. All right, Mr. Foggan?
All right, thank you. Any questions up to this point? Don't want to leave anybody behind.
What is the term on that PSPRS debt?
So, 2037 will be...
Yep, sorry.
So, we're not going to be able to spend this on something else anytime soon? I won't be here then?
You never know.
Well, and I will say that we are actually reaping the benefit of that, Councilor Staley, right now, in the cost savings that we... you recall, when we issued that debt estimate over that time period on cost savings was roughly $19 million. So, we're actually much better off having issued that debt, and we're actually able to have some cash freed up as part of that. So, yeah, it doesn't go away till 2037, but because of how we structured it and when we did it, the cost savings was a huge benefit to the general fund. Anything else? All right. Our... we've spent a lot of time on personnel and what we're currently paying our folks. We are in the process of... or we've been in the process of doing a compensation study, and the results of that are for fiscal year '24, our personnel costs are approximately $39 million compared to 30... about $35 million last year. That, of course, is a combination of wages, overtime, cert pay, retirement insurance, workers' comp, all that goes with paying employees. Our insurance benefits, our health insurance premiums increased 1% to 5.3%. We are recommending that the city absorb that increase, so that increase is going to be approximately $221,000. We are also recommending an increase to the city's contribution towards the employee health savings accounts by $750 for single coverage and $1,500 for family coverage. That's due to federal requirement or what increases by the federal government on what can be in those funds. And then, our retirement contribution, both AS, RS, and PSPRS. So, employer contribution increased from 12.17% up slightly to 12.29%. Employer contribution for fire actually decreased, and that went from 20.23% down to 0.38%. That's up. Oh, it's decreasing by that amount, sorry. And PSPRS employer contributions for police increasing between 0.05% and 0.38%. And I will just say that that's based on tiers, because we still have employees in the different tiers for PSPRS for both fire and police. Next slide?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
The... on the insurance benefits pool that we share with other cities, right?
Yes.
Does everybody pay the same rate, every organization? Is this a question for you? It is, right? You're the person.
Yeah.
He's got it.
Oh, go ahead. Is that for somebody else?
Mr. Foggan, this is Krista. No, she was smiling at me, but no, I know you know your numbers.
Go ahead.
No, the pool is divided with that. We each have a buy-in to get our levels, and then we... the actuaries come up with the rates for each cities and towns, and we also have the school district.
So, everybody pays a different rate, then? And what is it? Is it based on risk, age?
The rates are set based... again, each entity has its own population and whether or not they have different tiers, because we offer an employee only plan or an employee plus family, and then we have our high deductible health plan, and then we have our EPO plan. So, Havasu might have six tiers. They might offer employee plus family, employee plus child, employee plus spouse, employee plus children, you know, so they might have that. So, it kind of depends.
So, probably every entity has a different plan, and then, based on what you choose to offer, is the cost?
Correct. And then, on top of that, each entity may subsidize as they wish, because that's the... And then on top of that, each entity may subsidize as they wish because that's the own entity's cost. So like if we we charge our employees $40 a month for the high deductible for employee only costs, Havasu might be free or they might choose to, you know, do $100, you know, so they have their those choices.
Sure, that that I understand. I I was just kind of going more for if the if the city is paying the same, but it makes sense that that the plans are not all the same.
We have the same coverage.
Right.
But the plans themselves, the how much it costs per their buy-in into the pool because it's self-insured.
Yeah, I understand.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, excuse me, I have a question on that. The last line recommending an increase to the city's contribution towards employee health savings. What's required and what do we put in?
So Tina, do you want to cover that?
Mr. Foggan, I can answer that.
Oh, yeah, please.
That's okay. What that has to do with is if you're on a high deductible health plan, you're able to have a health savings account. There is no requirement for an employer to contribute. What we do to be competitive and to help drive folks to have skin in the game is we we hope that they'll sign up with the high deductible because then they're better consumers and also use the plan better. So we subsidize a small amount and what we're doing currently is the the half of the annual deductible. And the reason why we're increasing it is because the deductible by law can change each year. And so the deductible on the high deductible plan rose and then we met we rose it by $50 or $100 to match that half of the deductible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. All right. Next slide. All right, so personnel, this is our personnel summary as far as new positions. So working with the departments on personnel requests, we have a request of 754,000 across of the different funds. So what we have is an airport employee to basically oversee the airport industrial park leasing. We're referring to that person as a leasing coordinator. That person will make sure that leases are up to date, that they're being paid and working on leasing into the future. We hope to be doing more of that, obviously with more tenants and more interest at the airport. The HERF fund is the the four next four employees are part of our street maintenance program that we've covered with the council. And then we have a public works administration position. Basically, our streets division does not have any direct help administratively. So this position will actually do the day-to-day help with purchasing, bill pay, all of the stuff that that they need as far as admin support. We also in solid waste fund, we have we were needing an operation and maintenance supervisor. This is a position that they've been without for a couple of years and really having a very difficult time without it, actually. We have water operating out of the water operating fund, a water operator, operations person, water resource manager. This goes to our our strategic plan in our effort to make sure that we are exploring and looking at the appropriate wells and locations as well as making sure that our our resources are being maximized to save as much water as we possibly can and really help move our our efforts to to manage our what's happening in the Sacramento Basin along with what's happening in Walupi Basin. So that position will will focus directly on that and helping us move our water, not only just water conservation, but water usage and resource management to a much higher level. And then finally, we have in the wastewater fund, an electrician three position. This is a position that we absolutely cannot do without. We cannot do this work with a contractor and we've had a we've had an electrician that has been working between the different public works departments and that employee retired. And so this electrician three position will be vital to our wastewater system that has, as you can imagine, has some pretty unique challenges when it comes to electricity and and the electrical system.
Mr. Foggan, if I can just share something that I think is important. With the water operating fund, currently we're looking at water rates. And so just so you're aware, the water resource manager is being added, but only funded for half of the year. That's what we felt we could afford with the rates that are being proposed.
Yeah, thank you for that. I totally forgot to mention that.
So on these four street maintenance workers, they're they're a different title. You have a crew lead and operations and maintenance specialist, two of those, and then a maintenance worker. Are these people who will be working out in the field fix our streets or are these desk jobs?
These are in the field doing all of the street maintenance prep and help on when when any chip ceiling is done or when a contractor is is doing any work. This is the team that will be out in the field, pothole repair, crack ceiling, all of that that we've that will get us prepped for any improvements to our streets. So yeah, none of these people are inside. These are all on out in the field.
Mr. Foggan, may I? Counselor Staley, we used to call them equipment operator As and equipment operator Bs. We've retitled that. We're trying to update our job titles so they kind of mirror some of the other competitors. And I think the county calls them street operations, one, two, three, things like that. So you'll see different job titles, but they are actual field employees.
That's right. I'm used to seeing the equipment operators.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Ladies, by the way, IT texted and asked if Krista and Counselor Staley, if you could speak up a little bit more.
Me?
They're they're you're anyway, it's thank you.
Well, just for the record, I've been able to hear both of them until that last conversation.
Okay.
I think I put my mic on. I'm sorry, maybe I didn't, I don't know.
Put it a little bit closer. Yeah, thank you.
All right, next slide. So I'm going to actually turn this section over to Tina and Krista since they've absolutely been doing the lion's share of the work on this. So I'm told that they're they've figured out who's speaking on which slide, so I'll be quiet.
We're both going to sing a song, no. So thank you. So we thought it would be interesting to share some of the experiences that we've had as city employees. And so you can see that the last formal compensation study was performed way back in 2004 and 2005. That study resulted in the pretty much the current framework that we had prior to going to the open pay plan when we had steps. That new pay plan was implemented in 2006 and '07 and was adjusted by 3.1% and 3.5% respectively. However, the great recession put a halt to that and cost of living and cost and ended all the the things that we'd been doing. The step plan wasn't funded and we'll we'll talk about that in an upcoming slide. Since that time, my predecessor and myself, we've done several internal informal studies. We hired consultants and we did additional work. It's not like we haven't looked at our our compensation since 2005. We just haven't done a formal study. So it was time to do the formal study and that's what we undertook this year. So this is kind of that history. I believe it might have been in the the little packet that we provided to you before the meeting, but you can see from a snapshot from 2009 all the way to 2023, there's three main columns, the cost of living, the salary increase, and then the compression adjustments. You'll see lump sum bonuses as well. Those are the years when we knew that we could not afford to provide additional compounding, you know, to to have that be anything other than one-time money. So we were able to to give some relief to employees that had not had raises year over year. Again, the step plan that we had in place gave that false sense of security thinking, oh, hey, I've been here five years, I should be on step five or six. It was never, we were never able to fund it as a city because of the revenue sources.
Krista, I have a question on that step plan, the prior step plan. How many steps were in that step plan?
It ranged, I think we had up to 10, something like that. It was it was it's been a couple of years where we removed that, but yeah.
Right, I see you've gone to 12 now, so yeah. I'm just curious what it used to be.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't bring that with me. It's ancient history. No, I'm just kidding.
My question is, can could the council adopt a policy that would say we are required to do the steps every year? I know each council couldn't change a policy, but we we have other budget policies that we've adopted. Could we do something for, in this case, it's going to be public safety, they're going to get these steps, that that just sort of sets the tone that that those steps will happen no matter what unless unless the city's going bankrupt? They should be a priority and we should find a way to fund them before we fund, say, the CIP budget or something like that. Is that possible?
I want to say yes, but.
I guess, sure, you can do that, but as you noted, council can change that priority. So I guess if your your thought is, well, you'd just like to put this in the forefront, this is the intent of council, but again, like I say, the next council can say, well, we appreciate that. Our priorities are going to be different.
What I would say is that that that's doable. Our five-year forecast and looking forward anticipates the pay plan and those steps as as part of our our forward thinking on on the expense side. So it the council doing that doesn't change the fact that we've already we've already are planning on meeting those step requirements. If, you know, like you said, you know, if the problem always with with that is if if we hit a year where we're having to slash budgets and, you know, the world's crashing down. Other than that, we we are planning on doing these these steps every year and not falling victim to what we saw happening over the la, you know, since the early 2000s with this community, which is have a plan, you know, basically have a pay plan and not not follow it.
So Krista, I apologize, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Krista, why was the step plan not implemented previously?
Why was it not funded?
Sure.
I'm not sure what.
Well, you just mentioned before Manager Foggan was providing his input that we were unable to actualize the previous step programs. Why is that?
I believe it was it was actually there was not enough revenue to do so. So in in a step plan system, it does not allow you to give a 2% raise. If the step between on a grade, if a step is 3.5 or 4%, if the city or the agency does not have enough money to give a full step, otherwise you don't have a step system. You have an open range system. If you can give a 2%, that's what we want. That's why we went to the open range system after one of our other studies because we could not afford at the time to do a full step across the board for all employees.
And aside from a policy that Councilwoman Staley is mentioning, how can we as a current city council body ensure that that step program is being enacted?
Right, so I know that you can adopt a you can adopt a compensation philosophy, which we actually had a resolution back in the 2005 period, and I've got it in a different thing where the council actually adopted. We want to be, not only we want to fund our step plan, but we want to be at the 50th percentile of the market. And they define the market and of course, we have different market days, you know, data now, but the council can actually adopt that philosophy. And going to Mr. Cooper is whether or not you can actually afford it as an agency that can change based on a lot of factors, recessions, pandemics, those kinds of things.
Well, and I would just say, Counselor Pat, that I actually think that that's something that we should have. I I think that we should have a policy that says exactly that, that we're going to be at market at 50%. There's that's, you know, that's.
I see what you're saying, Manager Foggan, and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly is that it's kind of 50/50. You're the council has to meet the city halfway to ensure that the step program gets enacted and is always in effect. So if something goes awry, it's really the city council that has to do some deep reflections and say, well, maybe we shouldn't be funding this CIP expenditure, but instead focusing on our city employees.
Well, there's that, yep. And I just want to caution caution everybody on on CIP projects versus operating budgets and salaries. And that is the the thing that we always want to do so that we we don't get in financial trouble and we don't make decisions. And that is that it's important that ongoing revenue covers our ongoing expenses and one-time revenue is used to pay for capital, right? So that doesn't necessarily equate on capital projects. You can do that one or two times. You can cut capital projects and pay wages and an ongoing revenue or ongoing expenditures. But if you don't have ongoing revenue to to cover that over time, what you're going to end up with is you're going to end up spending all your capital money, your one-time money on ongoing expenses. And that's that's pretty dangerous. So, you know, there's times where you say, yeah, we we think that the economy is down and we're going to make sure that our we're not cutting budgets, we're going to use one-time revenue to cover ongoing expenses. But you don't want to make a habit of that because that will that will quickly deplete your not only your capital budget, but it'll also deplete your surplus. So.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
So I am I have a concern, actually, I just want, the concern I have is that the step program be be put out there and we as council say, okay, yay, you know, this is this is great, this is a step in the right direction, and then it not ever be implemented. I think I've heard some comments that that has been the case, that's been some communication that here it is, but you may or may not be able to achieve those steps. So that that's a huge concern for mine. So if that compensation policy can be put into place to where that can happen. The other question I have is, once we get through this compensation study document, are we able to make any changes and can we discuss amongst us? Like, I personally think that the 12-step is way too far out. So I mean, that that's just in looking at it. So, I mean, that, that's just in looking at it, so, you know, I just.
I can provide you with data from the other markets. You're not seeing the whole picture, because we haven't been able to provide that to you. So I appreciate that concern.
Okay, yeah.
I have, are you done? I'm sorry, I don't want to.
Well, in, in all fairness, we're just seeing this today, so, you know, forgive me.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm not offended by your comment, I appreciate that. And I think that's what we're here to do, is to kind of talk about what the results of, of the study were. It's not fully completed, because we're still doing job description review. We've got a lot of little things that we're wrapping up. Then they'll, they'll provide us with the full report that, you know, has been requested. But we needed to put together some numbers for the budget. We felt that this was a good step in the right direction, so that's, that's why we wanted to present what we have. And I think that it's defensible, the way that we've come about the market that we've analyzed. I think all the factors have been accounted for, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have two things, I'm going to go with that one first. So, so you do have data to provide to us today to show how you got to those steps and those, especially, especially for public safety, but for all of them, really?
We have a tool that we have, that we've been using, the finance team and the HR team have been working together since we got the tool back and we, where we, so you get your pay plan, we'll get into that in a second. We get your pay plan, then you have to actually put your, your actual individual employees on the pay plan. So we've been working through that, and that's what creates the budget, so.
So the study, did they come back with the pay scales for Oro Valley, Sarita, San Luis? Like, so you have all that, because that's what I was asking for the other day, was the actual hard data to support all these changes. And that's probably what I've been doing, is, is I've just been looking up job openings in those cities to get a better idea of what they are, since, since I, I can't, I, they're not in, in the packet or in the documents provided. So it's, it's been very laborious, but I, I mean, I'll just warn you, I'm, I'm with Counselor Samley. I'm going to be requesting changes to those plans. My, but I want to go back to this policy, and I'd just like to kind of survey everybody. I'd like to make the commitment to public safety, that we are going to prioritize this step plan and it's not going to, to go unfunded. And so I'd like to have an actual policy that states that they will get those steps every year. It will be prior, a priority in the budget, and it will be funded. So I'd just like to kind of go around and, and see where everybody else is at.
Absolutely, I mean, you have to do that. When you're looking at our sister cities, where our officers and firefighters are fleeing to right now because they're paying better, Lake Havasu City, Bullhead City, especially, and I know a little bit more, I, I know some about the fire department, but a little bit more about the officers, because I'm a prosecutor. You know, I see good officers that love Kingman, live in Kingman, driving 30 minutes away for $8,000 to $15,000 more a year. And the other cities, they have those step programs and they ensure that their public safety employees are receiving those steps. If we can't make a commitment to ensure that those steps are funded or provided to our public safety employees, we're not going to have them, we're going to lose them to our sister cities. And absolutely, we have to make the commitment now that this is a priority. I mean, if we're losing them, we're also losing the time and money it takes to train them, which Police Chief Cooper has provided us, is in the thousands of dollars to train one employee. And we get that person's weight in gold if we're able to keep them for 10 years, not just 12 years.
I have one question too, on the step. How do you propose to progress through those steps? Is it a automatic thing, time and service? Is it evaluations? How do the steps work to move from one to the next?
Step plans typically, as long as there's no disciplinary action, you would just move forward years, based on years of service, each year you would move across a pay plan. If, if you were still an officer, you would move, if you're still a firefighter, you'd still move across a plan as long as there was no, it's not pay per performance, it's, you've been here another year, you're, you're given another step.
Okay.
And I would like to echo Counselor Pat's commitment to public safety and doing what we can. I mean, we, we have to make sure we're comparing apples to apples when we're looking at communities. We don't have a property tax, we don't have a public safety tax. So we, we do need to compare apples to apples, but we've got to give, we've got to give them some goals to achieve, because I'm all about morale as well. And if, if we're, we're not building morale, there goes retention. So I am absolutely, I, I am definitely in favor of that, as, as, for all of public safety, so, you know. Whatever we need to do, yeah, whatever we need to do to, to make that happen, that's within our means. I mean, we still have a fiduciary responsibility to, you know, do the CIP, to make sure that operating costs are covered and, and make sure that, you know, everybody's paid as well as we can pay them. So, yeah, I, I concur.
Vice Mayor and Council.
I would like to speak, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. It kind of breaks my heart that we're, we are losing our, our, our public service officers and men and women to Bullhead and Havasu, and they still live here, and they're going to Vegas. They may go to Vegas and make a move, but they, they don't want to leave here. And it's, I'm going to make this one of my priorities, is to make sure they see the light ahead of the tunnel, where they're going, where it's directed, and we don't want to keep wasting money on recruiting new people.
So Tina, would you bring that policy back to us when we approve the budget? Would it be built into the budget, or is that a separate item at a, at a council meeting where we would approve that policy?
I would assume it's a separate item, but I don't know, Carl.
It would be a separate item that we'll bring back. And what I was going to, what I was going to point out, based on Vice Mayor Samley's comment, is that the, if the council says that their pay policy is to be at 50% of the market comparison, as an example, then you're, the need to identify that you're going, there's probably no need to identify that you're going to do, or that, there's no guarantee has been pointed out, that you're going to do or follow the step program, because if you're, if you have 50% set for the market comparison, then you're basically saying that you're going to keep up, which means you're going to go through the step or you're going to, even in the open pay plan, that you're going to stay competitive.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going to, sorry to interrupt, but what, what we collectively have just said is that we want a policy that states we will fund those steps every single year. We are not going to include some kind of 50%. We, we are just saying that every year that step plan will be honored, correct? You guys, you're all with me?
Yes.
We're, we're all there.
I got that, but you also don't want the step plan to fall behind, right? That's, it's, it's one thing to have the steps, but if they, if those steps fall behind the market, you're, you're no better off.
So you have to have a multi-pronged approach, where you do a COLA or a market update every three years, or COLA every other year, or every year, in addition to the steps? So that's, I think that's Mr. Foggan's point.
And that's one of the, oh, I'm so sorry. That's okay, if, if you were to reduce the number of steps, wouldn't that compress? And wouldn't that allow for?
It would be a higher cost.
Yes, of course.
Spreading it out is easier on a city, yeah.
Right, not for the employee, but.
And that's something I had in my notes too, is that how often would we go back and, and adjust the, these, these rates?
Right.
So I think that is some, that is, that's something different, in that we just set that policy every three years, are reviewed. And, and what we're trying to do is just make a commitment that the step plan will be followed.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tina.
No.
Okay, I had one more question about this step program. Would we be seeing, essentially, let's, let's say we have hypothetically a 10-step program and someone made it to step two, but they've been working with the Kingman Fire Department for five years. Would we see as soon as we implement the step program, okay, we need to catch you up and put you where you were properly supposed to be at step five, as soon as it's enacted?
Yeah, that's, that is our, that is our philosophy, is that we want to recognize the years in service. And the same thing, that provides the ability to hire in laterals when we are down, like whether it's police officers or fire, we can hire laterals in. If they've got four years in service with another agency, we can bring them in. And if you've got that two-year employee, you have that justification why that person was brought in at a higher rate, because they have that post-certification or the fire experience.
Excellent, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
And we are seeing that in the adjustments, the proposed adjustments, is that we are accounting for that, Counselor Pat. And I just wanted to share, in addition to the policy, that don't forget, every year, we come to the recommended budget work session, we share what the increases are for personnel, and you'll have always that option that if the step isn't included, you would, for some reason, you would want to give us direction to include that. So there's always, every year, that as well.
We'll get a policy, a, a pay policy drafted up for your review.
All right, so the next slide just talks about what the study was, how it was laid out. When we contracted with the consultant, it was a thorough research. We did from the beginning, identify our comparators. We knew all the different steps that we were going to be taking. To Counselor Steely's thing, you know, we've got the data, we're working with the data, and then we have to figure out what we can afford, and so that's, you know, kind of where we're at now. So you can see the comparators that we've listed, we've got Bullhead, Lake Havasu, Mojave County, Sarita, Oro Valley, San Luis. We looked at some other cities informally, just to kind of see where they were. As has been mentioned, they're not all like-for-like. Even our two local geographic competitors are not like us, because of the property tax for Havasu, because of the fire district for Bullhead. They have different, different economic revenues than we do. But we did look at those, we also pulled other fire comparators, because not every city has a fire department. And then we also looked at the Economic Research Institute for, for salary information as well. The position in market was determined, this will go to Jamie's question, I believe. So we've got a weighted comparator method, combining Bullhead City and Lake Havasu. And those were mixed, in addition with the seven other comparators for most of the positions. And that was at the 50th percentile of the defined market. We did make one minor adjustment to Lake Havasu City, and we, we looked at them at 95% or five, we took a 5% reduction. It's not scientific, ECI is different. We're combined with Lake Havasu on some of the, the data, so it's very difficult, but we thought that was a, a comparison that we did. The question has been raised again about what about DPS? I have DPS information separately about what they do for just their troopers. DPS is an animal of its own. Currently, they are at 13 steps, where's my little sheet? No, nine steps for troopers, and they are starting their folks at $65,383, and they top out at 91.6. So it's a little bit out of our, our market and our, and our current comparators. So that's why they're not in the study. But we do have that information. They are recruiting in Kingman, just like they do, you know, Phoenix and the other ones. So yes, they, we could lose an officer or recruits, you know, because they also have their trooper cadet program. So that's, that's the reality.
And, and I understand that reality very well. It's, it's extremely difficult to compete with larger entities that have more revenue funds or streams coming in. But one of the good news, and I like our KPD officers, they don't want to patrol the highways. They want to do the neighborhood patrol duties and responsibilities that city officers have, and I really respect that. I think that the entire point though, is to make, is to, is to try to bridge the gap, even if we can't do it completely, is to get closer and closer there to where the opportunity, opportunity cost doesn't become so enticing that they say, you know what? I, I can't pass up DPS. Now they look at it and say, hey, the city's doing something for us, they care about us, they want us here. We could, we could remain here because we love our hometown.
Agreed, thank you. Just of note, we have 134 job classifications. We decided to commit to reviewing all 134 job classifications. We did not do a sampling. In the past, it was said, hey, we'll do some from public works, some from parks, from finance. And we would pick, that way it would be less work. But with hiring this consultant, we went for it and said, let's look at every single one. We did find that there were some jobs that did not have good matches. And a match needs more than two data points in order to become, you know, to be valid. And so when you, when you, when you get that, it's, it's really difficult. So on the slide, it shows that there, the initial analysis identified 66 of those 134 jobs were below market. Okay, so not just police and fire, but across the city. 23 were within market, and 32 were actually above market, and then the 13 had no matches.
All right, I want to ask you about all departments. Are you experiencing the turnover citywide that we are seeing in public safety?
Yes, ma'am.
You are? And so what is our average turnover rate?
The turnover rate has kind of settled down, and the reason why I'm hesitant, but we had such an interesting COVID react, you know, so it was like, we're, we're right in line with, like, with our state, the NeoGov. I don't have the turnover, the actual turnover rates, because we, we've separated them out by department, so I apologize, I don't know. But I can get that to you for tomorrow, if we're going to meet.
Oh, yeah, I'd be really interested to see that. We, because I think, you know, we have a clear picture from police and fire, but all the departments don't have a, a union representative to come to us and, and paint that picture. So I, I think that retention, you know, retention is a great way of saving money, and then that can be turned into pay raises as part of the ret, you know, it's sort of a wash, really. And that's what I hope that we'll all kind of focus on, is, is that that retention, it's worth it.
Yeah, I have a, a slide on the upcoming thing showing some of the hard-to-fill jobs. We've had a heck of a time, some of the professional-level jobs that, that we have not been able to fill, and it's taken quite a long time. So sometimes it's not just the amount of vacancies in a department, it's the vacancy that's really, you know, crushing for a department if, if they can't fill that position. So we've experienced that definitely citywide.
Krista?
Yes, sir.
Do you do exit interviews when people resign?
Yes, we do, we conduct exit interviews. We've now gone to electronic one. Sometimes employees are a little bit resistant to sit down and fill out a piece of paper. Some prefer it, but we do have an electronic system, so we're capturing that data.
So we do know why people leave when they leave?
We know the stated reason why they're leaving, yeah, so hopefully it's, yeah, exactly. The department, we've been sharing the information with the department heads. Prior to that, HR saw it, so we've made it a new practice that we're actually sharing the, the information statistics.
Good, I think that's important.
All right, so a part of the compensation study was to really review what the pay, pay plan structure is, and that takes into consideration the external equity, those are those market comparators. Internal equity, how on a job grade, you know, that would be where you're placed, like an accountant is on grade 209 or 109. And so you look at everybody else that's also in that grade to see if, you know, maybe this, this person's scope of duties is misaligned. Maybe it should be a higher grade, a lower grade. So we looked at internal equity, affordability, of course, the bandwidth, that goes to, to Counselor Samley's comment, or sorry, Vice Mayor's comment about how many steps. Well, we also look at bandwidth, right? So the bandwidth is how far it takes to go from the entry level to the maximum of the grade. So that's the bandwidth. Yep, that's what bandwidth is. Years of service and the wage penetration, so the years of service is, we were talking about how you progress across a pay plan, or how long you're in a position that's required if you need to promote. Sometimes there's years of service, you have to be a firefighter for two years before you can promote to engineer, things like that. So we look at that. And then the open plan versus the step plan. So these are all considerations that we were using for the basis of the comp study. Other factors, we've had a lot of interest in increasing our. our paramedic and hazmat, well, specifically paramedic pay for firefighters. The fire department has been losing also, not necessarily based on base wage, but actually on a stipend. We are down paramedics. And so it's critical that we keep in step with what other agencies are paying. So we've looked at those. We, we did a comparator study on that. Of course, we took into fact the cost of living or cost of wage adjustments compared to our other cities and comparators. And then again, new hires and placement of those promotional candidates. When you create a new pay plan, you want to figure out where you're going to be able to bring those new hires in at, based on your existing employees and make sure that you don't have that compounding compression. The things that we have left to address is that compression, which we've addressed year over year. And because unfortunately of the turnover and some of the internal promotions, we find it's much less of a worry. We know we might have some fixes. We could not adjust, we could not address it perfectly right for this fiscal year, but we plan to tackle that either going forward. But we do know we, we would have some additional review. We did some great spot checks on our placement and felt very comfortable like where they were as far as the wage penetration, how like they've been there compared to others. So we're pretty good, but we're maybe not perfect. And then the individual equity, when we hire folks, we don't believe that we've hired women at a lower rate or hired, you know, different, again, those accountants versus equipment operator. We feel that in the same, same pay ranges that we've done a good job, but we want to take a deeper dive into that as well.
Do you have an idea of what those compression issues will, will cost?
Because when we did our spot check, we really couldn't identify a whole bunch of them because we, over the last few years, we've done a lot of work on the fire department. We've done a lot of work on the police department and we, we spread them out. We did kind of a mock exercise last year for police where we actually sort of semi-placed them on steps. So if they came into the agency with prior years of service, we adjusted them accordingly. So we kind of took care of that. So
Okay.
We're feeling very good about it. But we initially thought it could be very expensive. I don't know if you have a feel either. Right. We, we, we don't have that identified yet.
Okay.
And just for clarification, Krista, the type of compression that you're talking about, are you talking about the overlap, just as an example, for a, currently it would be like a STEP 12 patrol officer to a beginning sergeant? Is that kind of what you're talking about or something different?
It could be that. So if you promoted as a long-term fire engineer to a captain or in the, in the police service, you could have been placed on an early step. And then somebody else could have been on that early step as the sergeant or captain and not have moved across. Remember when we weren't funding them?
Hmm.
So that could be part of it. It could be hiring in where we didn't give raises for a few years. It could be hiring in on equipment operators or park ranger or parks and rec employees where the groundskeepers are all making the same wage, but some have been here five years, some have been here 10 years, and we've got a new person making relatively the same amount. So those kinds of things have happened. But again, we've addressed a bunch of that through the last few years.
And, and I know we're going to have to keep addressing that. Are we going to address that in the future or is there, basically, I just want to know if there's some articulable plan or goals that we could put into place. Because when I'm looking at the captains on a fire rig, when I'm looking at the sergeants and lieutenants at the police department, I see a minimum goal, or sorry, minimum starting rate and then the maximum. But unlike the steps, I have no frame of reference on how to get from point A to point C because there's the middle step as well. So A, B, and C.
So we've already have a commitment to, if we are going to hire or promote someone in that, in that example, we would not promote somebody that's been a long-term firefighter into an engineering position or we'll, we'll skip that because they're on steps too. From an engineer to a captain, we would not start them at entry any longer. We used to say you would only get a maximum of 5 to 10%, period. And so then we would get a lump sum bonus and we'd do lots of, but they were stuck at that entry level. We're no longer going to have that philosophy. We're going to be able to recognize current years of service with the agency because we understand that informal leadership is as important as bringing in outside captain, which we probably would not do at a higher rate of pay, right? So we're going to go ahead and recognize that.
And I think that's a great goal, but what I'm really getting at is we see the, the ultimate end goal. And how can an employee be certain or, you know, essentially predict when they're going to reach that end goal?
Are you talking about on the open pay plan?
On, well, I don't know. It's, it's the, the revised, let's say, you know, I'm looking at the last page. It's the recommended pay plan for, and I'm going to use, I keep picking on police, so I'll use fire. You know, when you're looking at a fire captain, their maximum hourly rate, how can they predict for the future when, or how can they expect to get to the maximum hourly rate? That's kind of what I'm getting at. Is there, is there some sort of articulable standard that we either have in place or that they would be able to foresee so they could continue working at it instead of just remaining stagnant or in limbo for some time?
Right. I have an answer, but Mr. Foggan, would you like to address this question?
Yeah. Well, the open pay plan, basically, as has been explained earlier, gives us the flexibility to give increases across the pay plan at what can be afforded. And so an employee goes into the open pay plan, something that has happened in the past, as you pointed out, these compression issues are exactly what the open pay plan hopes to avoid and expects to avoid. And that is that if the city can afford to give the employees a 2% increase and a cost of living for a year, the, the employee, all the employees on the open play plan can expect to basically get to work through that system based on what the city can afford to do. And so there's, there's no absolute guarantee that anybody is going to get to the end of the, or reach the maximum. Our, our plan and our hope is that as you're, as you continue on with the city, well, first of all, we want you to promote. That's, that's number one. We don't want you to stay on a pay plan or a pay grade for an extra long time. But if that's, if that's what you're doing, you will grow in the pay plan based on what the, what the city can afford to do for increases each year.
And that's one of my concerns. And I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Foggan. Well, it depends on our ability to afford it and we don't want to run short if we do implement a STEP system. However, I think that some of the concerns for very good firefighters and engineers is that they don't really have the desire to promote into captain, which is a position that we're in dire need of. And they won't promote because of the uncertainty aspect or being stagnant in their pay. I understand it might be our desire, well, if we could get to it, we want to. But if there's a clear delineated path from point A to point B, point B being the maximum pay rate, it makes it a lot easier to explain, hey, firefighter, fire engineer, you really should be seeking to promote right now because we could give you a predictable trajectory of what you're going to be paid in the future instead of, well, I promoted into captain right now and now I'm in limbo or now my pay is stagnant. And I hear what city management or city council is saying, well, we'll get to it when we can. I think that's one of their primary concerns and that's a concern I would like to alleviate. So
Well, and I would say that, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I would say that that's the problem that the city has been in for the last 20-plus years is that what we had was a STEP program that wasn't working. It wasn't affordable. And basically, you had employees that were getting all compressed together on, whether it was at the captain level or whether that was at the engineering, engineer level or whether that was at the sergeant level. What the open play plan, play, pay plan allows us to do is if you've been, if you've been an engineer in the fire department for 10 years, as an example, and you wake up one morning, you say, you know, I want to, I want to promote and I'm going to do the testing and I'm basically work, I'm, I want to be in a, a leadership role. And you're successful. The open pay plan allows us to take into account the 10 years of service and place you in, in that pay structure where is a, that becomes much, much more difficult to do in the, in a STEP program. And again, walking employees, being able to walk people through a STEP, STEP plan is extremely expensive. And if it's, we feel like, well, it's a, the open pay plan is, is a best practice, being followed by a large number of organizations. So it's not new by any means. But it, that employee that promotes to a leadership position is going to get the opportunity to have increases. They're going to be placed in that, at the level that their years of experience allows or says that that's where they should be. So that's, that's how they will progress. And that's how all the employees on the open pay plan progress is cost of living to keep up with the market and raises.
I understand, Manager Foggan. Thanks for that explanation. But I've been talking to some firefighters and officers who have been working over 10 years with KPD or KFD and they still haven't reached their maximum pay. And they're still left in the dark with a, in my opinion, an unreasonable amount of uncertainty. And I agree with Councilwoman Staley when she's saying that the ability to have projected pay will improve retention rates and those retention rates will lower the cost of hiring and training new employees. I think it can become a wash if implemented successfully. I understand what you're saying, Manager Foggan. I think this is a difference of policy and opinion at this point.
I, I wanted to chime in on that because I, I totally agree. And it's one of the questions I had. Normally, you'd have sort of a philosophy like mi-, minimum is somebody with no experience, no training, no, they're, they're just learning on the job, right? Mid, you've been there a certain amount of time. You have a grasp and maxed. You've been there a long time. You're running the show. And maybe that's, that's what I was hoping maybe you would say is that, well, yeah, if they've been here five years, we make sure they're at the minimum, 10 years at the max. I'm uncomfortable with this idea that you have to be promoted up the ladder to make more money because you're supposed to make more money when you go up because you're taking on more responsibility. That shouldn't just be like, this is how I make more money to keep up with inflation. You know, I'm, I have a small business. I'm a small employer, very small compared to the city. So it's, it's easy to say, but I cannot just give my guys a 2% raise because that's all I can afford if minimum wage goes up by eight and a half percent. And I can't start people at that new eight and a half percent starting rate. And then my top guys that have been with us for 20 years don't get eight and a half as well or more. And then you also have to take into consideration who your biggest competitors are for those employees. So I have to know in this case what Bullhead and Havasu are paying and what they're paying their guys that have been there in that period, five, 10. So I think that the philosophy is flawed, that we would always just do a 2 or 3% COLA and think that that's okay. We should look at time on job. You, you have to be at the mid by, by around this period of time, maxed out by this period of time. The employees know you're gonna, and I don't understand why we don't pay by performance as well because that would help. If you're a really good employee and you're, you're working hard, why, why don't you get to the mid or max sooner? You know, so, and that's, as an employer, those are the things I'm looking at because those, those really good employees, I definitely want to retain. And I, I will give them raises. I hope no, they're not watching, but I will give them raises even quarterly or more often to retain them. And I'm not sure there's room in this for you guys to, to be able to make those adjustments for the sake of both retention, but also having the best of the best employees.
Typically, the open pay plan, the minimum is, as you described, the midpoint is fully qualified and the endpoint would be mastery level. So we, we use those terms exactly as you identified. So when we're placing a person on the pay scale, that's what we would want to do.
Do you have an idea of timeline? So you could go back and say, this person's been here five years or still at the minimum because the COLA raises have kept a minimum. Do you, are you able to do that?
Again, we've been making adjustments over the last few years. So I'm sure that there's people that would think that they want to make more based on a STEP plan that we don't have in place right now. So.
So I would just say, Counselor Staley, that what we've, what we've implemented is not just a COLA, but we have implemented a COLA and, and raises as, as part of how employees are being paid. Because you're right. I mean, if you just offered a, a COLA each year, basically all you're doing is, is keeping up with the market, but you're not moving employees across the pay plan. So that there's basically that two-pronged approach of the, the COLA that, that keeps you in market and then the, the raise which recognizes your years of service. So that's something that we have been doing. That is a philosophy that we absolutely believe in and want to continue to do well in advance over time. We don't want to have what's happened to this organization prior to where you, we weren't doing anything for the employees, maybe a bonus. And then what you would see is a knee-jerk reaction that would catch some employees up and, and put them where they should have been all along. And so the, you know, the pay plan that we now have allows that. And what I would say with regards to the, what we're doing with our employees is that we want all of our employees to be all-stars. We want them to be engaged. We want them to be, every single one of them contributing. And the, the push that we've been making in the organization is that we're talking to our employees on a quarterly basis about performance. And so there's this, you know, if we have people that aren't performing up to standard, we're talking to those in, we're coaching those and mentoring those employees so that they're contributing the, the same as the employees that are all-stars. And I would say that that program has been working really, really well. And that, I'd also say that, back to that promotion, the promotional idea of if you've been in your position for eight years and you promote up, this system allows for us to recognize that eight-year experience and what you've already learned and to be placed on the, on that, in that range. And it also allows you to take someone who has shown themselves to be really good and not put a lot, have not put in a lot of time in at, at a, maybe an entry level position. And to be able to still promote them, put them put them at, at the minimum of whatever that leadership role is and watch them grow across that, that scale over time. And generally that, that employee, if they, if they're doing that, promote to another position pretty rapidly.
Manager Fogg.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a couple of questions. If you're in a recruiting capacity for fire or for police and you sat down with a prospect, could you tell them what they needed to do in a certain amount of time to make a certain amount of money? Because I'm under the understanding that the PRS, PS, the retirement is based off of their, they're based off of their highest paying years. So to me, that makes sense. As the same, if you could take an internal, already-employed person from either of those departments and they're here in year two or three, could you sit down with them and tell them in five years or eight years, what are they, tell them, show them what they would be making? So they are clearly identified where, where they need, what they need to do to get where they need to go to make the pay that they're looking to make, get paid.
In the, in those leadership levels, I could show them what we've done in the past and what our philosophy is moving forward.
Well, I'm not looking, I, I, I'm not looking at the leadership levels. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the hourly's. I'm looking at those that we're look, that are, are at, that we want to retain, that are the most, some of the most costly to retain. I'm looking at those positions that we want to invest in them and we want them invested in the city to be able to stay for 10 years. Could you do that?
I could show that, like I said, I could, the, well, the front, we've already presented or we're recommending a step system for those, for what would be considered the frontline employees. So that's-
So currently you couldn't do that, but with the proposal that's in front of us, you could do that.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Firefighters, engineers, patrol officers, that, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Yeah. You know, Krista, I think that i- if I'm reading the room right, the will of the council is to, to fix this, but to make it so that we're not back here in four years, five years, or another council isn't back here and it's broken and we have retention problems. It'd be better to just swing for the fences today, fix it all, talk about, you know, how, how does the open pay plan really work so that people aren't on the minimum? People know where they're going, how much time to get mid-max? And, and so I think we're really open to your suggestions to make sure that the decisions we're making this year truly make a difference to your staff so that you, there, there aren't people walking out to go to Bullhead. Who wants to live in Bullhead? Nobody. They cannot be better than Kingman, they just can't. We, we want to address that. And make it longstanding. We'll start stealing their good employees and add them to our good employees. That's, that is where we want to go.
Sounds like a great idea. Thank you. Shall I continue with the presentation?
Okay.
Ron, we are proposing a break.
Oh, all right. It seems we've been going at it for a while, so yeah.
About five minutes or 10 minutes? 10 minutes. Okay, so be back here at 5 after.
I'm here.
Great, thanks.
All right, we will continue with Krista and Tina.
All right. So thanks for the break, we appreciate that. So we'll go on with the presentation. This slide talks about the pay plan structured differences. The new pay plan takes police officers, firefighters and fire engineers and moving them to a 12-step pay plan. The bandwidth is 40% and step increases range from 2.7 to 3.6%. The remaining positions, including the fire leadership and the police leadership, were placed on the open pay plan with also the 40% bandwidth and approximately 5% separation between the mid- mid-range and each grade. The open pay plan begins at 1550. We've had so many changes in minimum wage, we didn't want to have to change it next year, so hopefully 1550 is good on the entry level rate. We have 30 grades, and again, that's like the 109 to the, you know, the top.
If, so, okay, I have a couple of questions. Explain 40% bandwidth, please.
So if you start at $10 an hour and it goes across, that's a 40% range?
Okay, and then if we want to make changes to the step program, would you like to do it now or when we get to their departments? Do you want to power through this and then as we get through the departments, we can?
Do you want to, yeah, let's go ahead and go through the presentation if that would be okay?
Yep, yep.
And then, yeah, yep, that sounds good. And again, thank you for your input.
Of course.
Lost my page changer, here we go. All right, so this gives an example of our current pay plan for police officer and firefighter, and in the next couple of slides, I have some other ones. These were some of the harder to fill positions that we're going to highlight. And so if you look at our current pay plan, shows police officer at grade 301, the minimum, midpoint, and maximum, 48, 441 through 67, 783. The new step plan would be the minimum of 55, 300, and the endpoint would be 77, 420. You can see the percentage change from the grade 301 to the new step is about 14%. So that's how our pay plan shifted. This is not individual people yet, this is just the pay plan, remember, endpoint and with the midpoint in the middle. We did our best to align midpoint to the market, so when we had a variance of something, we would take, we would align it closest to the midpoints. When we looked at each of our grades and replacing them with the pay plan, that's what we focused on because that's the standard, that's the best practices, and that's what your, the 50th percentile, the midpoint, that's all the key as far as whether you go a shorter bandwidth or a longer one, you want that midpoint to be aligned with your market. So that's what we try to do. Firefighter, you'll see on this one, the 401 was the existing grade, 41, 845 to 58, 880. This is based on their 2756 schedule, that doesn't mean much to you all, but there is built-in overtime on their salaries as well as the potential for paramedic pays and hazmat pay, things like that. The new step plan would bring them, the minimum step would be 46, 656, and the endpoint is 65, 318. That's around 11% increase or a change to the existing pay plan. These are some additional examples of where we place the positions on the new pay plan. Our existing assistant city attorney and planning service managers were kind of difficult to fill. I'm sure you've heard from Carl in the past that we were shorthanded with some recruitment issues. The current assistant city attorney position was at a grade 224, and you can see the new pay plan would increase that, that grade about 14 to 18%, so quite a bit. The market was a lot different on that one. Planning service manager was the same grade 224 on our existing plan. The market data actually showed that we were above, so we were, we will adjust the grade. There's nobody in that position, but the position wouldn't have lost money because we were going to do a 2% increase anyhow. So if there had been a person in that, the grade went down, but they were still suited, seated within that grade, if that makes sense. And that was anywhere between 15 and 11% over from that. And civil engineer, to grade 220, that was a very difficult position for the engineering department to fill. We had had an assistant city engineer open, we made the decision to downgrade that to a civil engineer, and that's why we actually were ultimately able to fill it with that. And that, that new grade is going to be 118, and you can see that's about 13 to 18% change as well. Project manager is another very difficult force to fill. That's the, one of the higher ones, 19 to 20% difference in the market. So see, these are some of those general ones that you guys were kind of curious about. These next three are unique, they're all current grades 209. They are going to be placed on 107, 105, and 106 respectively, and you can see public safety telecommuter, that was the highest market change, and that was the 13 to 12, almost 14 to 12% change. And then the signs and marking tech was the lowest, that went down to a 105. And again, individuals wouldn't have lost ground, but the market was stating that we were only that, that small of a change was required. And then the survey instrument tech has been a kind of a hard position to fill, it's also a 209, and I just did it for illustrative purposes, that it didn't fall on the 107 or the 105, it actually fell on the 106 when we looked at the market data. And again, we had that midpoint in mind when we did that alignment.
Krista, I might have missed this.
That's okay.
I think you already mentioned it, but are these numbers like under the public safety telecommunications, 209, 107, like, I'm sorry, what do those numbers mean again?
Thank you, that is the grade. So we talk about step plans, right? So you know what going across as a step, like 1 to 12. On the pay plan, you fall somewhere, like if you were a prosecutor, you would fall on grade blah blah blah, okay? And that's based on where you are. So it's the vertical axis of your pay plan.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for pointing that out to me.
And so again, the numbers 107, 209 don't mean anything other than the top number, the 209 is our current, and then the 107 is a proposed. The blue is a proposed. Any other questions on my ramblings? All right, so the recommendation, and Mr. Fogg, and I'm not sure if you wanted to talk about this part, or?
Keep going, you're doing great.
All right, so the budget recommended, as we've, you know, shown you all, is a 2% across-the-board salary increase for all full-time employees. So as I mentioned, on those grades where the market said it may be reduced or was already good, they're going to get a 2% raise anyhow. And then on top of that, they would get the market adjustment, and we place the folks on their pay grade where they were previously on their pay grade, so they don't lose ground. So if I'm already that five-year employee, I've already been recognized, I've had raise and colon and whatnot, I'm going to go vertically and we're going to place you on that. Okay, so that's, that's the decision we made, the commitment, so we could place them on that. We also did, oh, the market adjustments for full-time employees, for all full-time employees positions identified as needing adjustment. So again, if the market said it was, needed to be higher, the market adjustment is that varying percent based on where they're going to be personally slotted on that grade. So I might get a 10% raise, Tina might get a 15% raise or a 5%, you know, depending on where they are on that grade based on years of service or based on where they're prior sitting.
Are there a lot of employees that are only getting 2%?
Not a lot, there are some, there are some.
Okay.
So the answer, so there's that, remember where we started with number of people that were under-market, at-market, and over-market? That's, that kind of give you a good indication of 2% versus who's going to get a larger increase. Those that were out of market, under-market, I should say, the adjustment's going to be, is going to be a larger.
So I understand that they're above market or whatever, but they still, all those employees are still dealing with inflation and, we don't want to lose those employees that are only going to get 2%. So I'm a little bit concerned about, about that.
We can identify that, we can break that out for you.
Okay. There are about 25 employees, councilors, yes.
Yeah. We've also, again, identified the fact that we were falling behind on our paramedic pay, and we also took the opportunity to increase our hazmat pay, so that, that was a big adjustment. We did meet with fire leadership, and that was a welcome increase, so the proposed increase is going to help quite a bit.
Will we see what that increase is later on?
Do I have that on here?
I believe it's on the proposed pay plan that, for fire.
I have a question, will the hazmat pay also go to the police department? Because I know we have some hazmat-trained officers there as well.
We did not specifically market, do a market study on those. We have not been out of market on fire or on police.
Okay.
We've actually been above market on police as far as most police officers are not receiving those, those differential pays, where other agencies don't necessarily offer those.
Okay, I just knew we had some hazmat-trained PDs, so I want to make sure they're being...
We're not taking away what they have, but I don't, I don't know that we had to do an increase, but we'll, I can, we can...
Yeah, police check.
Yeah, there's so many of those fine details that we definitely want to button down, so thanks for that question, counselor.
Seems like they should be the same, that police and fire should get the same hazmat pay?
Yeah, sometimes it's a different certification, same name, but we can identify that.
And can you, do you know what the range was on hazmat pay, what, what the highest hazmat pay was and the lowest? I was surprised to see it's only $1.
Right, yeah.
And that's a serious, you're, you're making a serious commitment there to be hazmat certified, so, do you know what that range was?
I don't have it.
Okay.
I don't know that we, did we get any of that information? Yeah.
So it's only going from 82 cents an hour to a dollar for hazmat pay?
For hazmat, okay.
But for the paramedic pay is the big one, and that's going from...
Yeah, okay, now I'm seeing it. It's in little print.
I, I, I had to fit a lot on that sheet, I apologize for that.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn this part over to Tina because it's got the fiscal impact on here, it's some fun numbers, yeah.
So we wanted to show you what the fiscal impact of just those market adjustment salary increases would be by fund. So in total, it's about $2.3 million. Again, that's just the salaries, that's not all of the burden rates associated with that. So in our general fund, of course, we have our public safety and a lot of the city administration, parks and recreation. And then as we go through in water, we've got our utility billing, engineering, water operations for our streets, and then the rest are pretty self-explanatory.
And I think we were talking about getting some numbers on what the turnover is costing so that we can compare these two, because I think outside looking in, you might go, oh my gosh, $2.2 million, but I'm guessing that what we're paying for that turnover is far higher than this, I'm guessing. I think just the police department alone is probably half of that, so.
I think that's what he has shared in the past.
Sorry, Tina, what was that?
I said, I think that's what he has shared in the past, the chief has shared.
Right.
So I have a question, with the increase or the fiscal impact, what would that do to, I mean, currently, our public safety expenditures are a little bit over 51% of our, our...
General funds budget.
Yeah, our budget. So do you know what that, does that affect that? I mean, it will affect that, I mean, answer my own question, but can you tell me what that, what that effect will be?
I can, I think I have it in the budget book, actually. If you give me a second, I'll just cruise through that real quick. 57% of the general funds budget would be public safety's total budget, not personnel's, so I'll have to get those numbers for you, actually, Vice Mayor Samuel.
So that's without personnel?
That includes everything, and you're asking for just personnel, right?
Well, I'm, yeah, I mean, I would like it broken out, but the figure you gave me, 57%?
Is total public safety's budget of the general funds operating budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And of course, that's up from 51%.
From about 51 to 52%, yes.
Right, okay.
Did the feed get cut off?
No, I think there's just some, some discussion and some, so, yeah.
All right. So I guess I'll ask for questions, since nobody else is.
What, what's the question?
No, I think he's here. Mr. Fogg, did you?
I would, I don't have a question, I just, based on what we've presented, is there, are there any questions?
Doesn't look like there are any questions.
Excuse me, I'll ask one. So all of these, this proposal is in the budget?
Correct, yes.
All right.
That is correct. Anything else? I thought Counselor Staley had asked a question earlier that got put off.
Oh, I'm going to attack all of those things as we go through the individual departments.
If it's compensation, is there, is it just possible to do that while we're on compensation?
Well, it's quite a bit, and I think that it, it involves our whole philosophy for how we want to handle those departments and fix their issues, so I would prefer to do it when we're talking about the departments.
Okay, I just didn't want to skip by this and...
Oh, I'm not going to let it skip by, don't you worry.
I've got it. Okay, so that takes us to section three, which is the operating budget recommendations. So I'll just walk, walk you through each department. Basically, I point out what we normally, what I normally do is try to point out large changes that are greater than 10%. And I just say right now that what you're going to see in the operating budgets, and I won't necessarily keep repeating it, is that obviously with the compensation adjustments that have been proposed, we're, we're going to see, I think, almost every single department with increase larger than 10%. And then also internal, our internal services, those funds, because they are basically personnel-intensive, you're going to see an increase to the internal fund charges to the departments, and that's for the most part based on our salary, proposed salary adjustments as well. So with that, we'll just start walking through, walking through the operating budget.
And, Mr. Fogg, and I was just going to share that on the top of each of the operating budgets in the presentation, there is a page number, and that is associated with the page in the budget books, if you wanted to refer to those for more detail.
Yeah, well, thank, perfect, thank you.
You bet.
So we don't have, so we'll start with city council's budget, not really any large changes or proposed changes to the, to the city council's budget. We have a recommended fiscal year budget for council at 28,000, or $228,226. Next. The city manager's budget?
Uh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought you'd pause there.
I'm sorry.
So, did you want to go? Oh, on the city council budget, we, we are paying for a new table and chairs for the conference room. Do we still have our existing table and chairs? Or have they already been dumped?
Well, they haven't been dumped, but they're in pretty poor shape, and they, they haven't been really great to sit in for extended periods of time. And, uh, they, they haven't been really great to sit in for extended periods of time. The table is kind of a challenge because it's one giant solid mass of wood that takes a army to move. And the remodel of the, of the room is, that table cannot be, I actually don't know how they got that table in there, to be honest with you. But working around that, that conference table is going to be extremely difficult. And then moving it is extremely difficult. The chairs, I think the chairs have just got to be replaced because their arms are falling off of them and they're just not in good shape.
So do we want to pay for that, council? It's like five, 5,000, 5,500, how much is it?
For the conference table and chairs, it's about $2,000 of that.
Okay. All right, and then I just want to highlight, it came up last night, that everyone uses that room, so I'm not sure why it's coming out of our budget.
Uh, it doesn't have to.
You don't have to answer that, I was mostly being sarcastic.
It had to come out of somewhere, it was, uh.
We should split it, right, between everybody, and then only be like.
We can all share.
If it's 2,000, I think we could absorb the cost. From, from our, yeah, that's what we should do.
We will be renting it, and then we will use that money for police and fire. Hazmat pay. We should get hazmat pay.
Anything else on city council? All right, next slide. Uh, city manager, this is my budget, so, um, really, the, the increase, I do want to point out the increase in personnel, I've actually, as I think, uh, I've discussed with a number of you, that we're moving from our, uh, public affairs coordinator to an assistant to the city manager position. And, and we have made an offer this week, uh, to that, to a person. This reflects that, um, adjustment to that new position. The internal, uh, city internal services, I've explained that, uh, as part of the increase that's happening with our internal service charges, uh, that you'll see reflected across all the departments. Uh, any questions about the city manager's budget? So that ends up being, uh, 563,972 dollars.
Yeah, Ron, this is Keith, I have a question on that.
Yes.
I know when I brought that suggestion up to you, instead of replacing the, uh, PIO, let's look at a, I thought I said an assistant city manager, not an assistant to the city manager. Wouldn't this still be like maybe a project manager then?
So.
Slash PIO?
Yeah, so this, this position's going to be, uh, they're going to do the PIO work, and they're going to do the legislative liaison work, the inter-gov work. But this person, uh, had, being able to increase this position, actually qualified, we had qualified people that have master's degrees. And so what we ended up with are people that can do analysis, that can oversee projects, that can help departments gather data and compile data at a rap, much more rapid rate than what departments have been able to do. It's going to be a, a huge help for, for me as well, uh, to know that someone is overseeing, uh, you know, several projects, making sure that we're doing the PIO, uh, work and, you know, also doing some, some pretty important analysis work that frankly, we, we haven't had the bandwidth to be able to accomplish. So I appreciate the suggestion. I think we've got, yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but you were talking about analysis and it just brought to mind something. So, will this, uh, person then, uh, be able to alleviate some of the studies that we're paying quite a bit of money for in certain areas? If this person's going to do analysis, or are we hiring this person, paying this person, and then we're still going to pay a consultant?
Well, so, we, we try not to hire consultants, but we hire consultants that are based on their expertise. This, this person may be able to reduce, uh, a need once in a while for consultants, but it will, you know, for instance, the consultant we're using to do, that you met last night, as far as the water policy, that, that is very, uh, specific work that you need an expert in that area. So, um, I, I think this person, this position will certainly be able to provide extra support and may be able to take on, um, a consultant-type activity from time to time, but remember that other, other work is not being, being done when that in-depth analysis is, for a study, is being done. So, uh, my hope is that we're able to look at operations and data that we haven't been able to look at in the past. I can't say for sure that this pers, this position will replace a consultant, but it's definitely possible.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Good question. All right.
Okay, uh, well, hold on, I don't think, I, I don't think we've gotten to where we have a decision on this. I, um, I was disappointed to see that the assistant to the city manager, which every time makes me think of the show The Office.
Uh-huh.
Right? And I was disappointed to see it's a, it's a PIO position. And to me, we could have used an assistant man, an assistant manager in order to help our projects move forward, to, um, oversee, you know, departments that are struggling, um, to make sure that the CIP is, is executed within, um, the timeframe we're expecting. So to pay this much for, um, a PIO and, and analysis, I, I'm leaning towards just defunding the position and, and pulling it, because I don't think it's going to help us, uh, reach any of our goals. And I don't know how, how do you guys feel about that?
I agree.
I'd rather see a community development services director to oversee planning, engineering, those departments. I think that would be money better spent, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
I, I, I was thinking when an assistant to the city manager was brought up, it would be more akin to like a chief deputy county attorney to the county attorney, or it would be akin to the undersheriff to the sheriff, some person who, if there's a family crisis or something, and Ron, you have to be out, which this week has kind of been, that they can alleviate your, the pressure that's on you and reduce the amount of stress and burdens you carry upon your shoulders. And you could attend or even take a vacation every once in a while if you, you really need it, right? But someone who could, who could seamlessly fill in in, in, like I said, moments of emergency.
Right, so I, Lake Havasu has this exact position. And that position is working really well for Lake Havasu. There's actually a number, this has kind of become a common, uh, position for cities. And, um, I, what I would say is that that's ultimately where I, I see this position, um, really transitioning to, like I said, working with departments. Yes, analysis is part of it, but overseeing projects, looking into, uh, issues and being able to, to work with the individual department to see where, you know, where we're missing something. You know, where, uh, do we have personnel assigned to the, the proper areas? You know, just that is this position, exactly what you just described. We've made an offer to, uh, a person that is, I think, highly qualified, has a master's degree, and, um, ultimately wants to be a city manager. That is, that is his goal in, for the future of his career. So that person wants to learn the city at every department level. They, that person wants to, to help, um, with analysis in departments as well as overseeing, um, projects. I mean, that's what this, this position will do, is basically mentor, um, a person that will, will be in city management. This is a city management-type position, and that's.
Essentially, Ron, what I'm getting at is, if there happened to be another family emergency or if you decided to take a two-week vacation, would that individual be able to sit next to Mr. Carl Cooper, while you, while you tend to whatever the matter might be?
I would, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's, again, that's how Havasu is using their assistant to the city manager.
I, I, no, city clerk. So I want to help take some of the pressure and burdens off of Mr. Foggan. I believe I agree with, uh, Councilman Walker about a position, assistant city manager. I agree with Councilwoman Steely, I do, it's, it's exactly like The Office, assistant to the city manager. It's not an assistant to you personally, it's, I would like to think of it like a partnership. And when I see my bosses, and, and I call them both my bosses, Matt Smith and James Shopman, I, I don't really know which one is really in charge, but that's what I'm getting at. I don't know which one's really in charge, because they work so seamlessly together and they both can make the executive decisions at a moment's notice, and the other one would be okay with it. I want to grant you, Mr. Foggan, this ability to better assist you and aid you. I think that Kingman is going to grow. I think that you can't be involved in every project, you need a right-hand man or woman. And you could easily delegate that task, don't even need to follow up with it, because you'll know it'll be taken care of, like how I could delegate some legal tasks to some of my colleagues, I don't need to worry about it, I know it'll be taken care of. So I hear what Councilwoman Steely is saying. I want to better assist you, Manager Foggan, and I'm really torn in the middle. And I'm wondering if it's simply because of semantics, and I, I do want this individual to have the full capacity essentially of the, the city manager in a case of an emergency. That's what I want.
I, I appreciate that, I appreciate your thoughts.
Can you? Yep.
And I, you know, I guess this is, this is a stepping stone, uh, in that, in that transition, of course, the city's not had an assistant city manager position. It's a, it's a lot more money to the budget, uh, than this position. And, uh, the, the, like I said, the feeling, um, the, the extra help is certainly welcome.
So, here, and, I'm sorry to cut you off, Manager Foggan, I'll give you a perfect example. Right now, Sam Elters, the county manager, is looking for a assistant county manager. And I would like what Councilwoman Steely has handed me as the job description for this assistant to the city manager, I, I don't want this, what I want is essentially the job description that Sam Elters is looking for. And it would be an assistant city manager, just as Sam Elters is looking for, an assistant county manager to better aid and help him on these projects and act as his right-hand go-to person. So, uh, Councilwoman Steely, thank you for showing me the job application. I now realize I came unprepared, but I agree with you.
So the question is, do we unfund the assistant to the city manager position? Create an assistant manager position where we write the job description and make sure it matches our, our goals or what we wanted to accomplish with this? And, because this is, this is a PIO. So what do you, what do you guys think about that?
I, I agree with Councilwoman Steely. Seriously, you could go to the county website right now, cut, copy and paste essentially, but replace the word county for city for the job description that we're, we're looking for, um, uh, as, as assistant city manager.
I agree as well. It's always good to have protection, you never know when something's going to happen and then we have to go temporary without somebody if something does happen. And one of my jobs is something happens to me, there's somebody right behind me to take over what I do, and it's just protection of the city and it protects us and our wants and needs for the city.
Well, I appreciate that, it's, it's going to cost a lot more. I, I certainly will work on a job description and, um, we will look at what the range for that position will need to be.
So, so, Councilwoman Steely, how do we go about this? Or I mean, I need, I need maybe one of the senior members here. What, what are we doing? We scrapping this and then revising or keeping the budget, but scrapping the position until we get our own? Like how, how does this work?
So.
And I think that the, um, we could also be competitive with the assistant to the assistant, sorry.
Don't do it.
Assist, I, I think, assistant county manager position, they have the pay scale. I'm sure that we could form something that's extremely competitive. I think that the county has a larger budget than we do, so we could do something hopefully similar, but slightly under as well.
We will absolutely gather all that information and present it to you.
So, um, how would we wrap that into this budget, Tina? Would you, does that, to approve that position? Because we all have strong ideas about what, what we want that job description to be. So for us to approve the job description and the funding, would you bring that to us in upcoming council meeting? Would it come back in when we go to vote on the budget? What does that look like?
Mr. Foggan, are you good if I answer that question?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, yeah, sure.
Okay, so I would propose that we work with, um, HR in developing what, uh, where that position should be slotted on the pay grade. It is an assistant city manager that would oversee department directors and whatnot. So I would guess that it's going to be at a higher grade than what the department directors are. So we would, we would budget the way that we do other vacant positions, find where the grade is, budget it at vacant, and bring it back at the tentative budget adoption include, and sharing that change with you.
Okay. Do, do you want to say something? Oh, okay, and then do we, does that employee, do we want them to answer to us? Do they, would they report to us?
Oh, no, they.
No?
No.
Well, I'm asking council what they want.
Then you're hiring a city manager.
I'd say let's look at it, but I, I don't have a problem with them answering to the current city manager. And they can delegate and see who's taking what projects. I think this will be a big plus for us, because we're getting ready to get.
I think this will be a big plus for us because we're getting ready to get two off ramps, actually three. The development that's gonna happen in this town is gonna go through the roof. I feel Manager Foggan is, is stretched thin as it is. And I know my previous time on council, every time a city manager would leave town, he'd always appoint, you know, either the chief of police, the chief of fire, somebody was like a fill in in case there was an emergency going on. And every time Manager Foggan's left town, I've asked, well, who's in charge? Well, he has his phone. You know, so I mean, how can the guy take a vacation?
Sorry, my mic was off. And that's what I'm getting at. And I think it would be extremely nice if, just as Police Chief Cooper has one of his lieutenants or sometimes the captain come in and fill when Police Chief Cooper is out. The assistant city manager would be able to fill in, sit next to Carl Cooper when Ron is away. Like last night, even though, you know, yeah, he's appearing by Zoom, but we could have on the spot answers or someone who is with the program, ready to answer council's questions.
Manager Foggan, how much were you gonna pay this assistant to you?
Uh, I can't remember the pay scale for that position.
Okay, so top pay ninety six thousand. How much more do you think assistant manager would be? Couldn't be much more.
Fifty thousand?
For an assistant?
Well, the thing is, you, I think right now it's a hundred and twenty five thousand for the assistant county manager. And then we're also comparing with department heads of our own. So it would be somewhere between that and our department heads, probably.
So just, just to throw this out there to the council, what I imagined this person would be able to oversee, I think I already said this, but I'll just start again. The, the inflammation, implementation of the CIP budget to oversee development services and to oversee public work. So not, not, not that they'd be their direct boss, but they would, that would be their, their day to day, what they're focused on, making sure that those departments are able to execute their projects, that things are running smoothly, that kind of thing. That's kind of, you know, that's kind of how I see them being very helpful to us reaching our goals. So it's an assistant city manager, but they have sort of a specific focus. So they might need to be, you know, their background might need to, to sort of reflect that they have experience in those areas as well.
So I, again, I appreciate the offer for the assistant city manager. The, it is a big load and nothing that I would have asked for, so I appreciate that. Assignment wise, certainly will, we will, I'll put together a job description. Assignment wise, I will certainly give that person, assign the assignments to oversee departments. And I think having that position be available when I'm not available is, is a welcome, a welcome addition. And so we'll get to work on that.
I have a comment. In this position, I would like to see this individual be available to council as well.
So that again is, you're telling me that you don't want to sit, me as the city manager.
No, that's not what I, at all what I'm saying. I'm saying that I, if we have issues in a department, it would be nice to be able to bring something to the assistant city manager. And then if it has to escalate to you, then, then so be it. But I would, I would think that you would appreciate the buffer.
So the assistant city manager will be welcome to talk to any city council member. But ultimately, this, that position reports to the city manager. And that's how our, our government is currently set up.
Okay, so I, I think what we'll do is we'll look at it when it, when you bring it back to us, Tina, for that approval. And if, and if it is not, if it does not reflect what we have said today, we will just unfund it at that point.
Okay, sounds good. We can do that. Thank you, by the way. That's, that was unexpected. Anything, any other questions? All right. Let's move on. City attorney. So the city attorney, actually, we're seeing a decrease. What's that, Carl? That's, that's unusual. But we have a decrease, which is due to legal services and the need. So again, reminding everybody, personnel and internal services are up just because of our, mostly for pay reasons. The increase overall to the city attorney's budget is almost ten percent. Their budget's running at just over one point two million. Questions about city attorney?
This is from Going Paperless, right, Carl? Stealing pens from other departments.
That's right.
Just as an attorney would. All right.
All right, next. City clerk. So as you will remember, we always have every other year election costs. And so obviously, the large decrease in the city clerk's budget is due to the fact that we don't have an election this year. And so they've seen a negative twenty eight percent to their budget. So a total budget of just under three hundred and fifty thousand. Questions about the city clerk? Okay, next one. Court. So our court continues to, you know, Judge Singer and his team continue to, to do their work pretty, pretty frugally and really the large increases again are on payroll side. So the budget that we're proposing for them is one million, six hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred and one or nine point two percent increase. I will say, is noted that the increase that we are seeing in supplies and services are jail fee increases that went up this year. Questions about the court?
I had one question I actually already asked, but I wanted to share it with everybody was that we, it does show that there is a raise here for the city magistrate. And we do his review every year. And he, so he put it in his budget that he, you know, that he could get a raise. But that is, that's a part of our process to give him a, a review first. And then we would decide on what that percentage increase will be. So I saw it in here and I was like, wait a minute. So it'll still be at our discretion and, and at what amount? So I just wanted to share that with everybody since I'd asked that question offline.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out. I'd forgotten about that. So good point. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Economic development. So our economic development team is, they are transitioning. They have been sharing an employee with the airport. And the time that they need from that employee is at a full time rate. And frankly, the airport needed a full time position that I pointed out when we were discussing the new requested positions. And so this will transition them to administrative coordinator position to a hundred percent to economic development. The other pieces, they have had, the supplies and services change is reflective of the facade improvement program. And the sign and mural program has been changed and moved to our finance department, our grants administrator, where this really does fit better is, is actually now taking in the applications and reviewing them. So that's the reason for the, for the decrease. So our, our ED budget is seven hundred and twenty eight thousand, five hundred and forty four or basically equates to eight point five percent increase. They've also included, I guess, the one piece is a, a new vehicle, which is Ford Explorer in which to allow employees on a vehicle. And also they do a number of visits with clients. And this will give them the opportunity to be able to provide transportation for visitors. Questions?
Yeah, I, I'd like to know what the economic development managers do.
The economic development managers are, they are basically doing the, they're doing visits to the, whether it's industrial, commercial. They are coordinating the the work that Bennett is, is handing out partnerships. They're, they're basically boots on the ground, interviewing and also doing, they're, they're responsible for doing attraction and retention. So they're working with existing businesses to better understand what's happening with them as well as they are actively working on traction to new companies that are looking. So these, those two positions basically are completing site selector forums and that, you know, things for attraction of businesses to the industrial park and to the city.
So is our economic development department becoming more focused on the industrial park and the airport? Because it seems like, as I look at their goals, and then I'm hearing that what you're telling me these two full time employees do, it's, it's, it almost sounds like we're not balancing our efforts citywide.
Well, and I appreciate that. That's not what I, if I, the way it came across, I apologize. It, so the, those two positions, one is geared towards the industrial park and industrial attraction and including, that would be a, a large part, obviously, of the industrial park and the expansion that we're looking to have with our seven hundred acre release as well as a aeronautical business attraction, something that in the past, we've not had a person directly working on. And then the other position, I think, for the most part, that's Sylvia Schaefer works on the commercial attraction and retention. Now, I, I'm a little bit hesitant to, to put them into saying that they do this or that because both of those positions are equally capable of working with businesses, whether it's commercial or industrial or anywhere in between, both within the city and at the industrial park. But I would say that for the most part, there's concentration that's happening both at the industrial park and inside the city limits. And, you know, we also, you know, part of Bennett's efforts have been to improve and work with our, the county and helping do attraction at the Griffith Industrial Park. That, that piece is also, you know, it's, it's not in the airpark. It's not, I mean, at the airport, industrial park, and it's not in the city. But we know that, that these businesses, these industries that are coming in, they're gonna, they're gonna draw from our employee population. And they're gonna be a benefit to the city as well. So there's, there is a lot of industrial opportunity in our, around our community, which we are grateful for. Those tend to be really good jobs. And so, but I would say the balance between those two employees is, is pretty good. And like, they have the ability to tag team and work across the, there, you know, across the city with a whole bunch of different businesses. Sylvia's just been really good at working with the commercial development and, and retention on that side.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to ask the council about a public relations position. We used to have a PIO. And that position was really created to try to get information out to the citizens, all the positive information about what happens at the city. Because, and as you saw last night with the survey, the city does not have the best reputation amongst our own citizens. And so years ago, when we created that spot, we felt like if we could just push out information about what really happens here, how great our employees truly are, how dedicated they are to making the city better. We talked about the projects that were coming, things were happening, that we would help to elevate the city's reputation. And then that position got turned into a PIO and it was really just press releases and what's the weather today, tomorrow kind of thing. And I think we, we missed, we missed the mark on what we were trying to do. And then we get the survey results last night and we've really dipped down. And so if no one's telling our story, then that's what's gonna happen. And I could see a public relations person, not a PIO, under economic development that was working on marketing the city because economic development, one of their responsibilities is marketing strategies in order to change the narrative about our town, excuse me, help, gosh, help increase our, I don't know, build some community pride, get the positive information out. So I, I wanted to bring this to the council to see if anybody else had an interest in changing that job description, putting it under Bennett, who is a very positive guy and would help guide that person to maybe do the job the way we wanted it this time. I think it could be beneficial if it was done correctly, but I wanted to bring that to, to the council to see how you guys felt.
Or, you know, not trying to add more burdens and duties and responsibilities to people who are already overworked. But is it possible to just make that a, a public relations, a task of one of the managers that's in economic development? I mean, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Steely, but when I think about how most people in our community are getting information about the city, it's not even Facebook, which I was wrong, I, I was thinking, okay, people go on Facebook, they see something posted by the city, or something posted by KPD, KFD, or, or something of that nature. But instead, they get it word of mouth through, you know, by their neighbor. Okay, I've, you ever play the telephone game? It, it becomes a complete cluster, right? So, yeah, absolutely. So I'm, I'm not really inclined to do a public information officer, because I don't think it would rectify the decline in our public perception. I'm, I would always, I always hope that our actions speak louder than words. And I understand what you're saying. Well, sometimes you have to market it. One of the reasons why everyone knows Paul Revere is because he actually marketed himself. He wasn't the only writer that night, there were three writers, but we all know Paul Revere, because he boasted about it, and stuff like that. But I'm, I'm hesitant to go that way. I would be fine with asking, or hoping that the economic development team and one of the managers could fill that role instead.
What about tourism?
Yeah, well, I agree with, with Councilor Pat. I mean, as our job as city council also is to control our costs, and try to keep government at bay.
No, no, I'm agreeing with him.
I know.
Josh already does all the marketing for tourism, so he's got a lot of everything in place already, so we give him press releases, he can flood it out with his tools he's already got.
I think, yes, in, in between departments, I think they, we can cover that.
Yeah.
Just efficiently, and save money.
And I believe that we bear more responsibility to get the word out, too. We need to have meetings, whether or not anyone attends them, at least quarterly with the public, where anybody can attend, it's well-advertised in advance. We, the word that gets out is whoever's ticked off at the minute tells his neighbor, and then it spreads. And, and we need the positive to go out that way. And, and I think at times, as a council, we're not visible in that. And I, I know we attend a lot of meetings, but I, I think we bear some responsibility,
Mr. Mayor, we also have slotted the person that was being shared at the airport. She's now moving full-time to the economic development team. She's an administrative coordinator. She does have some capacity, and that might be a, a way to maybe help get that message out to, to your all's point.
Good discussion, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, let's move on, then. The tourism and electric vehicle experience, this actually wraps onto two pages. The, really, so, thank you, I, I don't exactly know what page it should be on, but it's, why don't we move to the, to the other page? So not a huge increase overall in the program budget for tourism. They are a 7.3% increase, the, which equates to a budget of 1,360,280. Can you just move back to the previous page now? Thank you. So, you know, we're seeing, obviously, we are seeing increases in some of our just general cost to, you know, so as it references janitorial services. But we are looking to add an event that we think would be extremely important, and would be supportive of our effort in the electric vehicle experience, and that is having the Drive Electric Vehicle Earth Day Festival. That, that is, that would be a new standalone event, hoping to draw more people to Route 66, and to, obviously, to our downtown. And so that, that is a new one, new festival that I wanted to just point out, as we're, we're looking to add to, to the list of things to do in Kingman. Any questions?
Not so much questions, but I'm gonna gauge the temperature of the room here as well. I mean, I thought Councilwoman Steely and I would be on opposite ends of the spectrum on this one, but it turned out we were more alike than I thought, which is pretty good. I, I think that an electric vehi, a museum, just any museum, I don't care if it's an art museum, a, a vehicle museum, I think it needs to be taken care of and funded privately. I also agree with Councilwoman Steely's comments about, what about the overhead? How much are we going to have to put into this and constantly subsidize this? I, I worry that we're not going to get the correct market signals to determine proper costs. So I, I wanted to gauge my fellow council members and the mayor about how they feel about this. I, I'm not opposed to having another museum in town. I'm concerned about publicly funding it, and I think it could be better left privately funded.
I totally agree with that. I think after last night's meeting, and talking to the people from the Electric Car Association, or whatever their actual title is, they may be coming with a plan. So I think the EV museum, I think we should just put that on hold for now. I don't know if we just leave the money parked here till next year, or what we do with it, but I.
Well, can I just?
Ron, can I, can I just gauge the temperature of the room first, and before coming to you? And I, I'll, I want to hear you out, too, Ron, but I, I really want to know my, I want to know my fellow council members' thoughts.
I'm not in favor of publicly funding the.
So I'd rather move this discussion to the CIP, where we can more appropriately, I mean, we're, we're not, this isn't the place to talk about the museum as it is the concept right now, it's in the CIP. So the, if you want to talk about the electric vehicle event, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I don't feel either way about it. I mean, I, I look at the Route 66 Festival, and I'm not sure how successful that's been for our community. So I'm kind of here, neither here nor there, but I do want to get into discussion about the electric vehicle museum when we get to the CIP.
Okay, thank, thank you, Vice Mayor.
That's all, that's all I was trying to say, so thank you, Vice.
So how much has been budgeted for this event, the Drive Electric Vehicle Earth Day Festival?
$25,000.
$25,000. Now, I would be in favor of unfunding that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that the fun run was incredible. When you come, I, I went to the fun run. I like never go to a community event or get out, but I went to the fun run. I thought it was incredible seeing the classic cars, the muscle cars. I, oh, we didn't even pay for that? That's even better. Then the, the private foundation could do it better than we can. So I agree with defunding the, the electric parade.
Well, and I, I was kind of abrupt in saying that. But I, I am in favor of defunding this, because I feel like if we move forward with what I am hearing the council say about the Electric Vehicle Museum, and that group does come in, and they do something, then let them put on an event similar to the Route 66 Association. So I just want to give some more justification.
Okay, can I go?
I, I agree.
Yes.
All right, I guess, talk, I totally agree. One, are there enough electric charge stations to have an event like that?
No.
No. All right, so I voted to fund it, too.
Just by the way, you're not voting to defund anything tonight, you're just making a suggestion for council.
Correct.
Our suggestion for staff to address.
I recommend we defund the event.
Okay, excellent.
That's why they wanted to do things without you in here.
Okay. Anything else on tourism? All right. All right, engineering. So this also wraps into two, makes it a little bit hard to cover. Can we go to the expenses first? Yes, thank you. So the engineering department increased at 8.5%, their total budget, just under $3 million, and they have in their supplies and services almost a 36% decrease. And if we could move back to the slide before, that is, just, we wanted to point out that transferring the drainage plan update to the stormwater fund, and the street regulations update to the capital projects fund. So we were originally just budgeting for those two things in engineering, they don't really, didn't fit there, especially when we already have a stormwater fund, and the street regulations update is, is, basically is a capital project fund that should be in capital projects. So that is the engineering department's budget. Questions about that?
Okay. Um, wait, can we, can we take like three minutes?
Sure.
Sorry, I just want to scan this, I'm sorry, you guys, we, we were talking about a potential change, and I just, I just don't want to miss anything.
Why don't we go ahead, I think we should go ahead and proceed. He's probably just, Ron, got a question, too.
Yes, go ahead.
About engineering, and it's, it's a Krista question, probably, and you, too. Right now, of course, it says that we have 24 positions in engineering. This is a common problem, I know we have in a number of departments. How many people are we missing right now in that department? Are you, are you working on that?
I'm getting that count right now.
Oh, okay. I've heard two, four, I've heard a number of different numbers.
Well, I, I'm not sure, but I know that there's two critical positions that we've, that we've been down. I don't know the, the total.
What, what positions are?
Are those assistant engineers that we're missing, or plan reviewers? I know you said, you said critical positions.
Project, project manager, and, and plans examiner. There's a total of four positions that are currently missing.
Thank you.
Well, I was gonna ask about, there, there is a plans examiner listed here, but we're recommending zero. Are we, I, I'm wondering why we wouldn't want to fill that position to help with the process getting those plans through.
Yeah. Is Phil on the call?
Don't the zeros mean that that means it's an open position? No?
Recommended zero, I think, is to, to not fund it.
Are you there, Phil?
Yeah, can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
So we had to unfund the plans examiner position, so that we could fund the two civil engineer positions. And so the, the other challenge that we were having is, we were having a hard time finding qualified people for a plans examiner. But what we were running into is the plans examiners were more on the, the building, like the vertical side, than on the civil side. And so what we've been having success is, is hiring civil engineers that can serve as, in the engineering capacity, but also in a plan review capacity as well.
So we unfunded the, oh, I see, in 2022, the plans examiner, and then we added two civil, civil engineers. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And then is that enough staffing to efficiently do your workload, to handle your workload?
I would say we're still struggling to handle workload. But I think if we were able to hire some of these other positions that are currently not filled, that would reduce the, the, the workload on, on us to address the, the development side of things as well. So currently, right now, we have two project manager positions vacant, we have one inspector position vacant, and we have one survey-related position vacant.
Okay, I, and I'm asking about these because, you know, I want to start thinking about these interchanges, and the impact that they're gonna have on our community. So the, the construction of the interchanges, but then take, for example, Kingman Crossing, the amount of retail that, that is also gonna be built in that area, and, and then just sort of the wave of growth that comes with that, we should be adding enough staff to departments like yours in anticipation of all these projects that are on the horizon. So I, so that's kind of why I'm asking if, if you have the staff, if you have the capacity to handle your workload now, because it's only gonna get worse, and that's very soon.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to go over that with city manager and, and, and. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to go over that with city manager and, and, and figure out additional positions that we can recommend.
I'm, I'm just wondering if this is coming down to the issue with recruiting professionals. Like, I know I'm, attorneys are hard to find. Attorney Cooper will tell you, I'll tell you, attorneys, doctors are hard to find in Kingman. Our, Phil, our engineers, just as hard to come by.
They are. It's, it's hard to find somebody who is seasoned. We've had some success in hiring individuals right out of college. And so, if we were to try to add something that, that might be more what I would think about recommending, because that's where we've had the most success.
I'm, I'm sorry, what are you, I'm, I'm, okay. Phil, talk closer into the mic or, or louder, because I can't hear you. What are you recommending?
I'm recommending more of the civil engineer position to where we can, we've had more success hiring entry-level positions than we have seasoned
Okay.
positions. So, hiring somebody either directly out of college or with one to two years of experience out of college.
Hard. So, some, sometimes there will be like recruiting fairs as the engineering department go, okay, I see nods from Krista and Carl. I'm just making sure we, that we're seizing opportunities. Even, even my office has to go to recruiting events too.
I just think before this comes back to us, we need to make sure that they have all the staffing future that they may need for the next year.
Oh, I understand.
You know, so if we need to bump this up a little bit.
Like, create more positions.
Create, you know, yeah, for plans examiner or inspectors, because I know that's where they're, they're behind right now.
Right.
So, Manager Foggan, if you can make sure we, we're good before this comes back to us, that he'll have all the staffing he needs to handle all the growth.
Yeah, and I would say that we've also already started pre-construction of the conversations with the commercial development side at King, at Kingman Crossing. So it's not, it's not when the interchanges start, it's actually already happening.
Manager Foggan?
Yes.
My concern is, you know, we, we can bring them in. I don't want them to struggle through the process. So whatever we have to do to get them through the process, you know, so people don't get frustrated and we don't start getting a reputation that we're, we're difficult to work with. That, that's, that's my concern in this area.
Yep. It would be, it's my concern too, so I appreciate that. I would say that we've had very productive meetings so far in the pre-construction conversations with the developer. So, it's, it's going good so far.
Well, I look forward to hearing positive information coming from them rather than negative information. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the other things I had on engineering, they, they were the, the capital outlay that's listed here at the bottom of forty-six, that the engineering building is being updated to include stucco and paint on the exterior of the building. That's a, a historic building that currently is not stuccoed. I'm hoping this is a misprint and that we're not about to ruin that building.
The building in its current condition has a skin coating. And that skin coating is coming off in big chunks and along with the paint. So this would be to make it as it currently, is, is it currently looks and is.
So do you mean, so should this say plaster, not stucco?
Uh, whatever the skin coating is, I, I, I don't know if there's another term for it or not.
Keith is sitting here telling, he's saying plaster.
Plaster, not stucco. You say stucco, I think that the new, new process that goes on the homes with the, sorry about that. The, the new process is what, what I'd call stucco. The old building that, that era is plaster. And I just want to make sure we're applying the right system to the building.
Yeah, so that, the proposal is to, to fix those patches that are falling off with so that it matches the building. And then, that's all, it's a large building, so most of that cost is the cost to, to repaint it. But there is, there is some portions that are, are peeling off that need to be put back. And so, plastering, I think in layman's terms, that's just how it's, we refer to it, but it is, it will not have the screen and be to- totally re- wreath or stuccoed. So your, your point is well taken. But most of it's to clean up and, and repaint it.
I was just going to share, I don't know, plaster or stucco, so we'll make sure to make whatever changes need to be made. But I wanted to share, as far as the cost is concerned, the exterior is forty-nine thousand. The interior is two-hundred-and-five thousand. So I just wanted to be sure you are aware of the difference.
That was my next question.
Thank you, Tina.
What, uh, we, so I, that's, you know, a lot of money, two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars to remodel the interior of the building. What does this project entail and what, what is the justification for spending that much money?
So, we've got a, we've got the front entryway that's just completely do, it's almost impossible for people to know which direction they need to be going. The conference room, I don't know if you recall where the conference room is, but the conference room sits right there at the entryway. And so, that, that absolutely needs to be fixed. And since we've got Phil on the call, might as well let him talk about the office space issues that he's having.
So, one thing I want to point out is one of our biggest concerns is security. Right now, the, the way that the entries are, they're, they're not very secure. We, we've had a couple instances where someone has come into the building and haven't been caught up front and have ended up in the building either like, I always give this example, they were knocking on the bathroom door trying to find somebody. And so, one of the things that we're trying to do is to improve the security of the front area and, and improve the access or, or limit the access so that we can funnel people through in, in, in the the right locations. The, the other big thing is we're, we're running out of room. So, what this would do is it would redo the, the main floor area and allow us to put new cubicles in so that we can increase the capacity of our desks area so we can get more people into the same area.
Okay, and so, and I just want to go ahead and ask us about the interior as well. If this remodel project is going to change the historic integrity of the building?
So, my understanding is the, the, the historic nature of it is primarily, in terms of our obligations, is the exterior that, that we have to maintain. We're, we're not proposing to remove any walls or anything. The, the, the majority, except for maybe some of the stuff up front. But the majority of it is just going to be re- reallocating and buying new cubicles for, for the area and then doing something with the conference room.
Thank you for the information, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Any other questions?
Mr. Foggan?
Yes.
Uh, so I just, so we're talking about engineering here and possibly adding a couple of positions or whatever the positions are that are identified. Um, and I think it's important to bring up that engineering is funded by water. And we are currently undergoing a rate study that has a proposed rate increase right now of about twenty percent in the water operations fund. If we add a couple of positions, depending on how high paying those are, it could add an increase to that proposed rate. So I just want to be sure that you're aware. So, let's just say we hire, we, we have two civil engineers, potentially a hundred-and-seventy-five to two-hundred thousand dollars fully burdened. That would add another three percent increase that would be needed. So.
Do all the engineers have to be, or everybody in engineering, do they have to be funded by water? Because they aren't necessarily working on water projects, right?
So, we do receive allocations from the other funds that help support the water operations fund for engineering. So, streets pays into it, wastewater pays into it, stormwater pays into it already.
Okay.
To be building permits.
Right, we, yeah, because I don't think we want to raise those rates anymore to cover these people, but we definitely want to make Kingman an easy place to develop commercial or residential. And, and so we want to, we want to give them enough staff to make sure that that process is quick and friendly. And so, I, yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't really think about it affecting water rates. I don't think, I don't think that would be the way we would want to go. So we don't have to. Is that what you're saying? We do not have to pay for it through the water rates?
No, we do pay for it. We do pay for it through the water rates. Other funds contribute, but we take that into account when we're developing the water rates. Mr. Foggan, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, I just, I, I heard another civil engineer position. And what did you say the, the burden rate was on it?
About a hundred thousand dollars.
I thought I heard you say two hundred thousand.
I didn't know how, Phil, there were, I just said if there were two position, two civil engineer positions at it, I just, I didn't know how many.
Cause I.
I just gave an example.
Okay. Okay. No, I appreciate it.
So Tina, so is there, there's no other way to fund those positions? There's no alternative way to fund those positions? So I'm thinking out of the box here. I know. So we could potentially, I guess, we can certainly find a way to do that.
Perfect.
If there.
Your mic's off.
Thank you. That's just construction focused? You know, like
Developmental services?
Developmental, yeah. Can, if they were in a different department, not in the engineering department, could we fund them?
So if we put them in the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
That would be up to, I'd like to see what that looks like in the, add them to community development?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever you're.
We can just take it out of the general fund. The work is going to be done in the engineering department. So, how, how that funding occurs will, will certainly look at where, where that money could, could come from. And I don't see that, I'm, I don't see that as a stopping point.
Perfect. I like, I like to hear that. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure they were, they were aware, Mr. Foggan. Thank you.
I do have one quick question. Tina, since you brought it up, water, and I'm sure all of us didn't know that it was funded by water. What percentage of water funds? I mean, what, how much of their budget is funded by the water department?
Oh, I would say that.
I know I'm putting on the spot, but I don't think any of you knew that water takes care of that, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, I would say that probably less than fifty percent of their budget is funded by water. I would say that it, it depends each year on the projects that are upcoming in the year, but I want to say this year it's maybe thirty to thirty-five percent that's funded by water. The rest are funded by the other funds.
And that's like internal services?
It is by streets, by airport, by wastewater and stormwater.
I'm not a hundred percent of it is figured out through the water rates.
Correct.
No, yeah.
We take into account the, the monies that come in from the water fund, from the other funds, though.
Okay.
So it's offset.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. All right. Anything else on engineering? Right. Next one. So, financial services. Financial services, we're seeing a nine-point-eight percent increase to their budget this year. One million, five-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars is the recommended budget. The increase in the thirty-seven-point-six percent increase that you see there is, for the most part, what I talked about with the economic development department, them basically transferring the money from them to take care of the facade improvement program and the sign and murals program. The, we also are, as part of the Kingman Coins for Kindness program, we are also looking to add a landscaping portion that would really pretty much reflect what we've been doing with those other two programs where we would partner with property owners to do landscaping that discourage people from standing and begging for money in high-profile areas. I think we all kind of know where a lot of those are. So that's, that's the increase in financial services. Any questions? All right. Next page. Utility billing.
Sorry, I, I had questions there. I was just, I thought Cameron was gonna go and he didn't. What, how much is this, the landscape program? How much are we putting towards that?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand per year?
Yep.
Do we have any ideas of what, I know Annie had mentioned she was working with, I think, let's call it Albertsons, but, you know, it's the Ross area. Do we know what that's going to cost us? Just to get, get an idea of how many projects we'd be able to do with ten thousand?
So, we haven't finished developing how much each area will actually be able to get as a percentage, like we did for the facade program where we said we, this program will pay ninety percent and the property owner will pay ten percent. So, we're still in the process. We obviously want to make that ten thousand go quite a ways. We're, we're hoping that we would see in a year, two or three of these programs, or two or three businesses take advantage of this program. And so we really, as we finish the policies and share that with the council, we will take that into account that we're trying to get the most as many people to participate in this as, as possible. I don't know that we, you know, over time, that this is a program that will need to continue. But for a couple of years, ten thousand dollars to do landscaping, I think there's no reason to think we can't get three or four businesses to make improvements.
Mr. Foggan, does Chief Cooper, is he assisting us with locations to be provided as possibilities?
So, we are doing this as a team effort to basically gather that information and then make sure that those areas that we feel landscaping would be helpful, we will actually send a letter informing the, the property owners about the program and encouraging them to take advantage of it. So, that's a long answer to yes. He will.
Are we calling it tonight? All right. Mayor.
Well, did we want to finish right at five? What do you, what's consensus?
I think.
I'd rather break here.
Yeah.
We're about, we're almost halfway through.
Yeah.
So, or do you want to cover utility billing and be done with it?
Yeah, because then you start fire. You want to start.
Yeah, can we just do utility billing? It's not.
Let's get utility billing done.
There's not really too much to say about that, actually. So, utility billing is, it doesn't really have anything to report for, for service changes. It's a seven-point-six percent increase, their budget at one